Alright, everybody, sorry I'm late, I apologize. Contractors. When they finally show up and. You don't, you don't just say, oh, I gotta go now. Thank you, I apologize. So tonight, we're starting out with the work session for. Bikes in city parks, but also I assume e-scooters and just kind of clarification on some of those. Things that I kind of mentioned like you know, so let's go ahead and get started, welcome everybody and. Are you okay? Thank you, welcome Tiana.
Good evening, Ma.
Yeah, so I'll just kick us off real quick. So at the last council meeting, which it's hard to believe this was the last one, but June sixteen. We updated our parks and facility rules and one of the items that came out of that was a. Continued discussion around the use of e-bikes and e-scooters within our city parks. So staff has taken the comments and feedback that we heard and tried to craft a proposal before you this evening to. Better outline when and where. E-bikes and e-scooters are allowed. Part of that process, though, when Tiana and I were. Discussing this was realizing that really. It's less the specific. Type of bike and more about acceptable use of just. Bikes in general, including a traditional bike and an e-bike, and so we tried to. And I'll let Tiana jump more into this, but we tried to break it down into passive bike use and active bike use and really articulate where and when that type of behavior is appropriate. With a key focus on safety for other park users and enjoying our park assets. So with that, Tiana, I'll turn it over to you to shed some additional light and then we'll turn it back to council for any questions, comments.
Well, as Tyler mentioned, we revised the ordinance to prohibit motorized vehicles unless specifically allowed. So tonight, we come before you for guidance. And we have proposed. Four options for you with the fourth option being the one that would be the recommendation from staff. And that would allow.
Which one?
Sorry. This would allow all types of bikes in all of our city parks. Most of our parks would lean towards allowing the passive use with a few key locations allowing the active use. Right now, we have. The Jim Segal Loop Trail, Tickle Creek Trail. And. Certain aspects of Cedar Park identified a more for that active use or as a multipurpose trail. And those are the locations that we would recommend that and right now we're using the term active use, a more aggressive. Adventure style riding, faster speeds, more maneuvering tricks, more advanced skills. And then at any of our other parks with these, with our walking paths and such, they could use the passive use. Slower commuting to the park, a child learning to ride a bicycle. Things of that nature, and then we have a list of proposed park rules that we would part. Um, post everywhere, also outlining what active use means and what passive use means at those locations.
Can you just clarify that? You know, when you talk about active use, are you talking? Bikes, e-bikes and e-scooters?
So this, these rules would apply to any, any device. And potentially any device that's created moving forward, and if we address it through this means. Our signage and this policy that gives council and Tyler the room to adjust and adapt as needed as. The sport evolves further.
Overboards, anything that rolls moves that. Weren't born with. Are you open? Can we have comments now or you want to?
I mean, it's a workshop.
I, I don't like using the word passive to describe actively riding your bike. So, and I love the way you're going with this division, but I think we need. So maybe like a high energy or high impact or. Well, motor doesn't matter, right? So it's more the aggressiveness level that I think we're talking about. Of the activity. I just, I don't think we should call it passive, that's all. And I'll think, maybe I'll come up with something better, but I'll throw that out there for discussion.
Is that language that you found in other?
No.
Okay.
It's something that kind of through conversation evolved as we were really trying to think through how to address. Behavior versus restricting devices. And kind of what was pushing some of this is that Sandy Bluff and Bornstead specifically, we see a lot of kids. Zipping through on. Either like a battery powered motorcycle. The power wheels, the e-scooters, even though just the razor scooters, they're riding pretty fast through there. And causing walkers to have to step off the path and kind of jump out of their way.
Right.
So it's even in those parks that we would like to see a little bit calmer. Use.
Trying to look through.
What word would you use?
I'm looking up.
High impact, I mean, I, I, I think I just. I think passive is wrong.
Well, I think it needs to be clear legally as far as, yeah, like you said, it's, it's hard to define it. I, I understand the intent behind active versus passive. But anyway, let's go ahead and let her finish.
So the proposal is to allow. All wheeled devices in all parks. At Cedar Park. We would allow it within the action sports and on. You, on the return loop, which is. If you leave the jump line, I'm gonna talk with my hand, sorry. You leave the jump line and you would make an immediate left-hand turn and that's a shared use trail and we have bicycle images painted on one side and the other. Side is meant for pedestrian use. That's your more active use. Style, and I'll keep with those terms for now, and then the remainder of the park is that more passive calm. We do see kids going from the action sports over to the playground. I don't think we're going to get them to not ride a bicycle from there to the other side of the park, so trying to limit. And just say no bicycles on the pedestrian path, I don't. We'd have to post somebody there. All the time. But kind of seeking that calmer. Style riding, and then we have rules. Suggested for all bike users, always yielding to pedestrians, stay to the right, just trying to teach them. Bike efficacy.
I like the rules.
I think the intent, or at least the takeaway that, that we had when Tiana and I went back to talk about this is that. You know. Trying to regulate behavior and not devices was a key comment that I think most of the council, if not all of the council, shared. And then trying to take. Some of the feedback and, and comments that Tiana and her team have heard from park users where they're being, where their use of the park is being negative. Been negatively impacted by. High speed, more aggressive style of writing. Trying to mitigate that and just have some good clear ground rules on what is and isn't acceptable on. Those paths where people are walking. Their dog or their kids or. You know, leisurely strolling and then jumping out of the way of, of a fast moving. Object, trying to prevent that or mitigate that as much as possible. But dig in. Tear it apart, let us know what you think.
How do you expect to? Inform people of what type of trail that they are on? There's words passive and active. There's gonna be a speed limit, like, well, how's that gonna be designated by people?
With the new rules that we've adopted, we need to update our sign package. Throughout all city parks as it is. So we need to redesign our signs and we'll be posting new signage throughout all of the parks.
Could we think about maybe? Like, you know, ski runs where you have a black diamond that's the, like, high intensity or something that's just very. Um, cut and dried. Well, I mean, the challenge I have, you know, is you've got beginner pump track, you know, that's intended to be, you know, the two-year-olds I saw in there yesterday with the. You know, and so. That doesn't align with black diamond use, you know, when I kind of think of it as a mom or something.
But something more like, yeah, higher, this is a higher intensity, this is lower intensity.
I like your intensity.
Leisure.
Yeah.
Leisure and active use.
Leisure and high intensity?
Sure. I just, something along those lines.
I don't even know if we got, I, I actually really like the idea and it doesn't have to be black diamond, I don't, I don't care if you use a turtle in our, you know, you know. What's the faster one? Jackrabbit, whatever it is, right? But I think something more simple like that, with, with the, with this, with the, you know, top speed is just really keeps it simple as a. That's why I asked that question as opposed to. Bike to view, bike or passive use and active use. I think if people see that, they're gonna be like, well, what does that mean in that, where everyone knows fast and slow?
The turtle and the hairs. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So it's on all your riding on horses and tractors.
Okay, so I just want to understand clearly, so what we're saying is that where any wheel device on there, it could be. Non-electric or electric, right?
Yes.
And then, so we're just going for speed. Is that right? But. For all sidewalks, I mean, that's where it gets a little confusing because. So all sidewalks, all, uh, pay, uh, paid paths in a park are open to. Any kind of real use, is that?
Where it's a little bit of gray area and maybe Josh, I don't know if you have any more knowledge on this. An e-scooter is not allowed on a sidewalk in Oregon. But once we cross over into the park and we're calling it a park pathway, I think that we are allowed. To make allowances for them.
So when it's within a park, even if it's a concrete sidewalk like in Bornstead, I mean, I kind of had to go look and go, okay. What we remembered was there is concrete sidewalks on perimeter and then there's some paved paths. Kind of on, oh, and that is south end, I think, so. That's all considered parked paths or parked. Routes. Outside of parks.
Once you've arrived inside the park, you can leisurely casually. Ride through most of our parks. With respect, shared users and then. At Cedar Park and Sandy River Trail. Those are really designed for that more aggressive downhill mountain biking adventure style riding.
Does it, I like the turtle hair, hair thing, that is it, would it be? Okay to just say like these are turtle trails or something, turtle paths or something and. I mean, these are the slow use ones and then if it's not identified as a slow use one, it's assumed to be other.
Or maybe in novice.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of little kids.
That's why I kind of like the, I kind of like your diamond idea. Because it just, everybody, it's kind of a universal symbol, you know, you have blue, blue runs versus black runs versus.
I think for the, the more intense trails, that would make sense.
Yes.
It's high in any way depending on who's going to ride it if you don't know.
Especially around here, because cross-country trails, you're down.
You don't know what you're getting into.
Yeah.
I think the problem I have with that is that, you know, when I'm on a green trail, you know, there's some guy just bombing, you know, like. You know, if I'm a beginner, I'm not, but you know, when they just kind of go bombing, you know, just because they're on. Green trail doesn't mean they're not.
So where I was going with this is I don't think green means everything. I like the turtle. I think everywhere where we're worried about speed. The turtle is the, that's just the idea is slow down, take, you know, be careful, this isn't a racetrack. But when we get into the higher intensity areas, the most specific trails, three trails we mentioned. Or the bike jump, any of these, we could use a more. Blue, blue square or black diamond indicate.
And you're not, your mountain bike trails, like Sandy Ridge, they use, they use the black diamonds.
Yeah.
But see, that's, that's because there's generally only one route on these, these bike jumps and everything, you can just, you know, you don't have to go over bike jump, you can just go over the paved part. You can jump that paved part or you could just roll over it. But, or you can kind of go to the left and avoid the, the hump altogether, and so. It's not like, you know, it's a little different than Sandy Ridge in.
Yeah, but I don't, I think in that circumstance, you, short of. Designating a time for slow riders and a time for fast riders, you're gonna have them both.
Yeah.
They're gonna have to figure out how to coexist.
And, and they already are. I mean, it's no different than like in the skateboard. Area or any of that, I mean, people, people yield to.
Or even skiers.
Yeah, people yield to less experienced people. I mean, that's just kind of a natural.
Broken nose every now and then.
So what they've done, I believe in Gateway Green or a couple of other places. Is that like the bike jumps at Cedar Park. Um, what I saw, what I think I saw called at Gateway Green is. You know, where you could just kind of go over, like, they kind of actually showed the three different routes on there. So the bike jump was the black, was the black diamond, the. Um, kind of going over the bigger hump was the blue and then the. The lane to the far left was the green, so that even users could kind of. You know, pick, which, pick a lane.
Yeah.
So to get to. In this case, we'd be using those logos to identify the path or the rigor or the difficulty. Not the legislation or the rules associated with it. Right, so let's. So for a turtle, we're still looking at these rules.
Right.
Yeah.
For the non-turtle. These rules still apply, but we give them a faster speed. That's the only difference, right?
And that's kind of what I was thinking is that if we just identify this turtle trails, I don't think we necessarily need to. You know, mark the other trails that are turtle trails. You know, if we want to mark them for difficulty, we could.
I can see that, yeah.
I mean, are, do we have a speed limit? There was one.
Yeah, we have a speed limit regardless.
For, there was a top speed for the non-turtle trails proposed that was higher than the turtle speed, right?
Yeah.
We recommended not to exceed twelve miles per hour on the passive use and active use not to exceed twenty miles per hour.
Right.
So we'd still need to post. For those other trails so that they know that's a top speed. If we think that's an appropriate limit.
Yeah, I don't think we need to post each route or anything like that. Just kind of get across the, you know, on the turtle trails, it's this, on the. Trail not marked with a turtle, it's that. Does that mean, does that work for you, Ken?
With the speed, I think it's really. Probably just kind of a, a mental indicator to, to use some caution, because I don't know anybody that knows how fast they're going on.
No.
They're mountain bikes.
I had a speedometer on my bike as a child, I was that kid. I was really cool in like nineteen ninety-three.
Not one bit. For your, for your more serious riders, I mean, you're. My Apple Watch will keep track of my bike speed. I mean, so I mean, there is a way to do it, but yeah, kids.
Most people are not gonna know how fast they're riding. I don't think that they're gonna post an officer out there with the radar gun.
Laura and I were talking early about the enforcement, I mean, you write these rules. They're not really gonna change what ninety percent of people are gonna do. They're either gonna already do this. Or they're not going to do this regardless of what we write. I think. You do have to make these rules, though, to create some liability if somebody were to violate a rule. So if I'm walking on a trail that's a turtle trail and somebody mows me down. I want to know that there was an ordinance that prohibited that person from doing it. So when I saw him personally. You know, to get my medical bills solved for life, you know, there's something to fall back to. I think that's why you put. These sort of things in place is more.
As far as the rules go, you mean?
Yeah.
Well, and I also think that we, if we're using the turtle and the hair situation, we can do a green turtle with the speed limit just in the middle of it, and then the hair can be black. And it indicates both things at the same time, right? This is black, this is for more advanced, this is green, this is.
If you're gonna go into the color thing, I'm sure we're gonna get all kinds of issues.
We do already have the. Jump line. Identified as a green, I believe it's a green and a black diamond. And we have them named ascent and altitude. Indicating that the jumps are your more difficult and then the inner loop is your beginner where you can roll those first couple. That's already in place.
Frustration with us.
Not at all.
So let me ask Tiana a question, because I just want to. To work this out. Would we be signing? The pathway through Bornstead, for example. Would we really put a turtle on that sign, given that the. Park itself is just, in these terms, passive use only.
Yes.
That, I would see post any of, we have parks rule signs at most of the entry points there and they're. Near the splash pad and at those points, I would see. Calling out this park is meant for. Leisure passive bicycle use.
I think, I think at the entry points, because you're just setting that social contract, this is the expectation, right?
And I would propose that we do high intensity versus low intensity.
Oh, I like that too.
What is, I don't know what that means and I. I can't help you understand because everybody's.
Sure, but those, but those, so those high intensity, low intensity, how does speed limit that are attached to them?
High intensity what?
Like right, high intensity.
Pass.
Instead of passive and active. They could write the rules around those two labels if we wanted. So.
Labeling?
From the code, when we write the rules, she's, she's proposed, this, obviously this is a code, but this is a concept, right? Proposing to define what passive bike use is from what active bike use is. I don't like those terms Wendy's proposed.
Okay.
Sorry, councilman.
It's not signing or anything like that, right? It's not using those terms on signing.
That would be a separate.
It probably would go on the signs, they're. At parks like Cedar Park where you're going to have both styles of riding over in the adventurous parts, we expect to see that more aggressive. Adventure style riding and then the remainder of the park, we're gonna ask that you slow it down and you adhere. To these etiquette.
Right, but, but here's the thing with Cedar, with Basecamp, it's all ages, all abilities, so. You can't be going, you know, high intensity when there's, you know, three, two-year-olds on push bikes in beginner pump track.
There, there also has to just be kind of some social, social norms and working through and figuring out how to coexist down there, but. There are times that we're going to have riders in there. Advancing their skills and they are going, those jump lines are built for high intensity.
I mean, you know, the pump track stuff where the kids, I mean, the kids, two-year-olds are now we're on the jump line, and so I just tried to kind of clarify that even within Basecamp. You know, the intent it was to have is all abilities, all ages, all abilities, and so. When we talk about, you know, high intensity in that area.
That's why I was leaning more towards the active use because. Or a six-year-old, I mean, we can have varying. Riding styles with a six-year-old, we could have a six-year-old riding quite a bit more aggressively or actively and really challenging themselves and trying to develop their skills. Whether that be in the small loop or the bigger pump track or hitting the rollers, if we're gonna see all different uses over there. And I think we should encourage that. So there has to be some etiquette and. Just kind of working out their social norms, which I think they're doing, I've not, I've seen less. Complaints and chatter online, I'm not getting calls, I'm not getting emails about it.
I'm getting more confused now as we talk because. I thought we were talking about all of our parks, all of our trail systems and dividing it into those that allowed. Turtle-type behavior and.
Or fast.
Didn't.
Yeah.
And I thought everything in the Cedar Park. Active stuff, whatever you want to call it, the, the jump track, the, the, the bowls. And even the trail down to that lake, those were all considered. Go fast if you want to, but be careful, it's not, it's not a minimum speed limit, it is a maximum speed limit that would be proposed. It's like anything else. You had to ride safe, right? And then this turtle expectation would be all the. Outside paths over by the, in, in, starting to Cedar Park area, it'd be the ones over there by the kids area and things in the, the. Grandma loop that I do or whatever. And, and then. Bornsteads and all our other parks would have that label. That's what I thought we were talking about, it's just this division between fast and slow.
Yes, I think it is, I think, I agree with you, the only exception I would make is that we. We design a beginner pump track. And advanced pump track.
Do you want to put a speed limit on?
And so for the beginner pump track, I'm not saying that we have to necessarily label it as a turtle track. But I think, um. I think the intent that we all collectively have is the intent that, you know, you don't ride. You know, if you are an eight-year-old trying to build your skills on the beginner pump track, great. If there's, you know, a couple of two-year-olds on there. You know, mind your behavior, you know, give, you, you need to ride for the folks. You know, for the skill level of the folks that are right around you. At least in that beginner pump track area.
But Kathleen, I think, I think people do that. I mean, I think. This kind of goes back to what she was saying and, and I think when people utilize those parks. There is certain social cues and things that we just have to allow people to work things out. I. I would like to think and I, I, to my understanding, we haven't had any issues with a. Twenty-five-year-old trying to mow over a two-year-old who's on pump track, who's on the kid track, so I mean. I, going back to kind of what we were talking about earlier, I don't, I also don't want to get into overregulation of something, just to regulate something.
It's actually, it goes both ways and I've seen it and, and yeah, my, my understanding or my hope is that it could be kind of an expected standard. But here's the other thing that I see pretty regularly down there, is you got your, you know, three, four-year-old or whatever. Over on the advanced pump track going the wrong way, stopping in the middle of the trail and, and here's dad over there and. You know, somebody else is kind of calling, yeah, they do kind of self-correct, but I think.
And we should take it. That's not what you're suggesting, right?
No, I'm not at all, I'm just kind of trying to say, you know, I think our collective intent is to try to. Articulate what you said in a way that. Everybody understands what that means, and that's the hard part is because what's reasonable to, to one person is not necessarily reasonable to another.
I'll, I'll jump in if I can. I think we started by saying whether we were gonna allow e-bikes on the park trail.
Exactly.
We have more way over here to, to rules and expectations, so I'll get to that in a second. I really think this is two pieces. Um, you. Staff, you suggested that we go with option four and I would argue that we should go with option three, which we should mimic what the state's expectations is. For electric bikes and scooters across the board. That's a sandy rule, or that's a sandy policy. Now, we also then have specific park rules. Because every park's gonna be different from what they allow, which is what everybody's talking about. Um, so I want to go back to the original concept, are, are we all in agreement that we can now ride? E-bikes and scooters through our parks and trails, because that's what originally initiated this work session, was whether or not we would allow it. And I think that is what we're saying, we want to do is we want to allow that. And that mimics the state, you know, which would be easy. And now we want to, then we want to put rules around behaviors at specific parks, and I love the idea. Of, of signage that, you know, transcends to the bike rider or the trail runner. What the, those rules are, and we can, I don't know if we're doing that in this session or not, but it's, it sounds like we've morphed off that way, so just trying to figure out where we're at.
One option, I, I, you, you pegged it really well. One option is to kind of label those turtle trails for speed. And then label like the beginner pump track or, you know, a couple of the easier areas, the flatter areas for the skate park to be. Just a, a green, a green. Um, just to kind of identify it as a beginner area now. So if I'm on a beginner slope and I'm a, you know, double black diamond, you know, jackass, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm gonna probably get. You know, pulled over by the ski patrol if I'm over there trying to, you know, put people at risk. So does that?
I think some of the rules that we've put in place, you know, that you have to respect other users and stay in control. Kind of speaks to that. I'm hesitant to get too sign-heavy within the active sports areas because it becomes something, an obstruction for someone to crash into. It becomes some, an obstacle for someone to avoid or crash into. Yes.
My thought is just on pavement itself, not signs.
Mayor, I was just curious, and I apologize for first names that. Feel like I know you all so well now, and I'm barely learning first names, let alone. In regards to what you said about the, this junior beginning part of the bigger track. What, is your concern based off just making sure that through labeling, people understand the purpose of various parts of the. The tracks and things? Or is it to regulate maximum speeds or other restrictions on that space?
It was to regulate the intent of, you know, so if I have a new kid and, and you're not very experienced. Then, um, you know, you're gonna want to put them at the beginner pump track.
Right, but I mean, but the, the regulator is the opposite of that, it's the violation of that, so. We want to be able to fine or cite somebody who violates that, that would be the regulatory part. Versus just giving informative information to parents on here's where you should be. Which I think doesn't require regulatory level. So I, I, so if, if you're looking at it from that perspective, I think, I think. That's part of the sign package that ultimately has to come back or however it gets approved. But if you're looking to actually regulate it, I think we need to talk about. Why, you know, given that. Parents with the young kids at the skate park probably aren't the people we need to be good round citing, we just need to give them the right tools.
But those families may be detoured. From the novice tracks. If. The high. Adventurous types, they might, their kids might not want to go.
Then, then so that becomes, if you want to regulate against people using the tracks inappropriately, then we have to. Clearly write what that.
Have one competition, turn the. I can just see small kids, inexperienced riders. Coming up and taking it all in and being intimidated and. Without the little turtle there to say, you're welcome here, come along, they will park for you. I would just hate for them to be soured on. That portion of park use because it's intimidating if their parents weren't advocating for them or they just. Because it's intimidating if their parents weren't advocating for them or they just were not feeling like it was the right place for them.
Sure, but I.
But that can be anywhere.
I think, I think we're shifting into the signage and the, the, uh, the background story or whatever information we want to present as opposed to. Regulatory stuff that we need to get feedback as to what are the minimum standards we want to write into our code. Or remove from our code in the case of allowing e-bikes and things.
Let's be clear, they interject quickly. The code restricts the use of e-bikes unless otherwise designated.
Designated by you.
By me. So that the intent here, maybe I should have prefaced with this was to provide staff. The direction on where you want to allow those types of bikes so that we can adequately sign those specific areas. The sort of snowball effect that happened with that was we don't have anything that says what is good behavior, right? So great, we're going to allow them, but then what? You have, you have nothing else in place to say that was acceptable or that was unacceptable, which kind of led into step two of this conversation. Which was some, you know, baseline regulations or, uh, behavior that is, that is acceptable, which is. Ride cautiously, don't run people off the road, stay on the left or right.
The argument that stemmed from the last meeting was that we're not, we allow e-bikes or scooters. And now we're, we're saying we, we, we want to, but then there was the whole, do we allow them without the border beyond so they can pedal assist? Or is there a speed limitation that we put on it to restrict what the usage of that e-bike or scooter will be on that trail? And that's what we haven't got to yet.
Right. And I think part of the intent is that that's going to be ever changing. We don't want a bunch of signage that says class one or class two is or isn't allowed. Because now there's this new type of equipment and we've got to go re-sign all the parks. So in lieu of specific types of equipment. And just saying, you know, this is an acceptable speed, this is acceptable behavior is going to save us the hassle of resigning every year or two. When there's new equipment that comes out while also just sort of setting a baseline of, you know, acceptable behavior. I, I think one of the comments that we heard last month was, you know. If the intent is to prohibit certain types of conduct by only allowing a class one instead of a class two. Regulate the behavior, don't regulate the, the person or the mechanism on which they're writing on. So.
So it's allowing e-bikes and scooters, but limiting their speeds, the two different designations to get a. And I don't care what the verbiage is used, but a passive and an active usage that I've suggested would be two different speeds. And that's the direction you need from us tonight.
Staff's recommendation or jump in here, Tiana, if you, if you would like. We don't care if it's an e-bike. We don't care if it's a regular bike, ride whatever bike you want to, uh, through a park as long as you're doing it safely. And here's what safely looks like from the city's perspective. And that's these seven or eight, you know, sort of criteria, right? Speed, pedestrian yielding, passing safely, being alert. Not writing recklessly. And keep in mind that these rules will help us regulate, not necessarily citations, that's not the intent here, but. Um, removal or exclusion from our parks. If the same person is repetitively riding twenty five miles per hour through Bornstedt Park. And hearing through the splash pad, you know, they're going to get a warning and then eventually they're going to get trespassed from the park and they're not going to be allowed to come back. And so that's what we need some, some good foundation to fall back on so that we can exclude poor behavior and people that aren't being good. Uh, stewards of our parks or good participants in our parks, being able to exclude them and having the, the necessary sort of. Rulebook to, to rely on to exclude that type of behavior and those types of.
Can I ask where's the twelve and twenty came from?
It's kind, uh, in that ballpark is what I was finding online in, in searching. Twenty is what the state of Oregon sells too. I'm on their website.
Do you have any, uh, proposals, Lori, of what you want to see?
I, I'm in, I'm in favor of, I could go with either three or four. Um, I like sticking with what the state has. The state's laws are, uh, uh. Pretty vague and they allow governing bodies to kind of decide whether e-bikes are allowed on trails, which is basically what we're doing. Um, so I could go, I could go with either or. I, I'm not in favor of overregulating something that doesn't need to be regulated. At, at some point you have to allow people to make judgments for themselves. So, and that's the whole point of having outdoor sports and activities. So.
Okay. And then, um, this is a question for Lieutenant Craven. So have you kind of taken a look at the, uh, proposed safe use of city passing trails for bike, sea bikes and scooters? They've got, you know, number one through eight of, you know, speed limit, yield pedestrians. Pass safely, stay right, pass left, be alert and in control, no reckless riding, respect all users and park responsibly. Given those eight things, is there, if somebody was violating those, are those written in a way that you could cite somebody? For violation of those, do you know? Cause obviously we want people to, you know, meet these things, but ultimately if it had to be enforced.
I guess in, in addition to that, would you actually cite someone for that or would you do a opportunity to educate?
Well, obviously you would first do your education, but if they're, you know.
That depends, but. We, we generally don't cite for park rules violations. We generally exclude for park violations. So that being said, with the new rules that were just, uh, implemented. Um, they require a warning, uh, outside of certain circumstances before someone can be excluded. And so we may begin citing for park rules violations, um, or at least issuing written warnings. Because there's no other way for us to track whether someone was warned before we can proceed to an exclusion. Without writing a report that takes twenty to thirty minutes. That seems counterproductive. Um, so. In general. These are all judgment calls in the moment that aren't going to be adjudicated. Like there, we don't have to present them before a judge because we're using them as a basis for an exclusion. And then whether someone violates an exclusion is a criteria unto itself about, you know, what happened after that. So as long as I think, I think as long as it's clear to the public, then it accomplished. It's perfect.
One thing I would like to see is on number two, Tiana, it says yield to pedestrians. But if we could also just say yield to pedestrians, you know, and those younger or more inexperienced. Sort of like on a rain trail, you know, that's the, um, you know, the policies that you yield to, you know, folks downhill from you. Especially.
I need to.
Beginners. Is that something that you can add in?
Need pedestrians and pets to, uh, not that they should be off leech, but. I, I do possible ninth that I'd like to throw out there and that is if you're involved in an accident. I think there should be a goal decision about to stay for the first day, not run on. And maybe this is just my childhood coming back to me and the, or being in a hit run with a bicycle.
So there's no obligation, but there's no obligation in the state of Oregon for a, a person to assist in any first aid.
Yeah.
So I would, I would put back on that.
What is the responsibility if you're involved in a bike accident on the trail with somebody?
Is there a responsibility to call for assistance?
There is if you're driving a motor vehicle.
If you're driving a motor vehicle, but not, not, not an altercation. I would like to think that most humans. Would, would assist or at least call nine one one if something happened. If, even if they don't want to help, that they would at least do that.
So does Oregon prevent us from writing a law for our parks like that?
No, I, I just wouldn't be in favor of some, I wouldn't be in favor of something like that. You can't force people to help.
So I, I think most of this stuff is very difficult to talk about. So.
We're setting expectations. People have different levels of comfort with other people and altercations and, you know. Stress.
I can see that.
So what I've heard is there is some, um, possible interest in going with the state, uh, policy. And, and then on the other end is also interested adopting these eight or nine, uh, policies. And doing kind of turtle signing on the passive or, what do you call it, in? Oh, I said low intensity. Low intensity on the low intensity areas or the, uh, slower areas. Do we have a, can I just have a show of hands for who wants to do the state rules?
I, what is the difference between the state rules and number four?
And the what?
And number four. It feels like number four is an implementation of the state's rules. So that's why I'm questioning the, the, the one or the other. The way, the way I see the difference, and this is just my opinion, is that number four is about the rules. This is what we're going to allow and not allow or what we expect. Number, the, number three is more about the policy for riding in our parks. And the state doesn't say you can or can't. They, they just say they're leaving it up to us. So when I say I, I want the state, what I'm asking really is that we allow e-bikes and scooters in the parks.
So is it really three and four that we're saying?
Yeah, that's what I was saying. When I said I, I thought one, one's a policy and then the other is rules. Maybe we're not, maybe we don't need that. I don't know. I'm not the legal expert, but we, before we didn't allow e-bikes in parks. So we have to change that to allow them. And then we're going to set the rules or standards for what we want to happen in each park.
Well, the only clarification is that the state of Oregon does have regulations on where e-bikes are.
State of Oregon does regulate by classes in some areas. It excludes scooters from sidewalks. Also, if we were to just lean towards the state of Oregon and adhering to number three. That doesn't address the concerns that we're seeing at Barlow or not Barlow, excuse me, Bornstedt and Sandy Block where we are having that kind of aggressive. Careless riding style that is forcing walkers off the path. This, number four allows us to address rules across all the board. Get something that you were all comfortable with and repost throughout our park system.
And also, it also allows it, the, the main difference here that I'm seeing is it allows us to regulate part to part.
Yeah.
As opposed to the state rule is, is very vague, wide and vague. Where this is like Cedar Park, this can happen, Bornstedt, this can happen, and it leads into the city manager's discretion. That's why I'm in favor of number four. Otherwise it seems to mimic the state's rules pretty closely.
Pretty closely.
Is an option on number four to, uh, restrict all wheel use on certain sidewalk? I mean, like we, you mentioned it certain times, like if there's a concert or whatever or.
We could put an asterisk at the bottom that says, you know, these, we could put an asterisk at the bottom of all signs that says these rules may be modified due to special events held at the site or.
Yeah, or like if there's a big problem, like you said, if it continues to be a problem and they aren't following the rule, then we want to kind of just say, you know what? Sorry, but too many folks are getting hurt and, you know, this folks are following the rule. So I would like to have that option.
Can I make one suggestion for the rules? If you guys, I don't know if you agree with it or not, but, um, under yield to pedestrians. I, I would like to advocate for a number C, um, which is when the e-bike comes to, whether it's in a narrow path. Or it comes on a group of, uh, walkers that it slows to even less than twelve to three to six. Because nobody's walking twelve miles an hour. Uh, so that bike really needs to come to a slower speed, especially. I heard you say Tickle Creek and I walk Tickle Creek every day. It's got some narrow paths. And, and I get, I get out of the way of a pedal biker sometimes. Right. So when you're, when you're getting there and it does say, it does say, you know, announce your presence and yield to pedestrians. But I really would like that speed limit to be dropped around a narrow path, corners where pedestrians are present. But that's just my, so maybe I'm over.
I don't, I don't know how you enforce that though. I mean, I, how do you sit there and say they were going seven miles an hour? I, I just, I think one of the things, I think, I think Chris to that point, I think it is covered right here. All users must slow down when approaching pedestrians, curves and congested areas. Meaning you're slowing below twelve.
My thoughts in one A, one B, does that address it?
That's, yeah, I think so.
I think that's the best you can.
Yeah. Uh, Tiana, are wheelchair users or mobility dependent individuals considered pedestrians?
They have, they have special protections.
They're allowed, and even in cases where bikes are.
I just meant the yielding to them. That's not listed as a mo. Essential mobility device. If there's someone in a wheelchair and the path is small.
Yield to pedestrians or individuals using mobility devices and or.
A mobility device could be considered an e-bike though.
Well, why don't we just modify B to say all users must slow down when approaching pedestrians? Uh, those using mobility devices, curves or congested areas.
That kind of, the mobility device.
Yeah.
Is, is a such a broad area. I don't even think we need to get into the ADA world, world.
Just leave it as, as one of the, under the umbrella of ADA.
They're, they're covered in.
Okay.
When approaching pedestrians or other user, uh.
I mean, cause if you're passing another bicycle.
Other, just other users.
Someone else.
Yeah.
You're obviously overtaking them. You're slowed down. So if anyone else, other users.
But like other users is, is broad also. Other users is the pet that the pedestrian is walking and.
So where are we adding other users? Which one?
Pedestrian.
One B.
One B.
Okay.
Replace pedestrians.
Okay.
Got what you need?
Does that give you enough direction or are you, are you clear on the turtle stuff?
But I, I wasn't informed. Cause I don't think you asked.
Is there, um, anybody?
You were in the majority, so it didn't matter.
Anybody, no, it's, does anybody want to vote for three over four? Okay, so it sounds like four's consensus. And then is there any, uh, direction on the turtle signing?
That's a completely different topic, you know.
Consider it. That would be the direction.
I think that's, yeah, just kind of, you know, for me, I, I like it, you know, I don't want to be putting up signs. I'd rather just kind of get them stencils on the sidewalk or something like that that would work, um, so that.
Good luck. So what I'm hearing is low versus high intensity instead of passive and active. Everyone in agreement? Um, some minor language change to one B under the sort of rules section of this.
Yeah.
Um, as a reminder, this is not like ordinance language. This is just providing staff direction to implement the appropriate signage. And allow e-bikes at all of our parks, e-scooters at all of our parks, but regulating that. High intensity behavior to certain areas and we'll figure out how to best incorporate that toward a diverse hair. Um, logo or decal or, or whatever the right word is, we'll figure out the best way to incorporate that, um, to inform park users of the. Relevant trail or path that they're on.
On the number two, yield, yielding to pedestrians and those, uh, and, you know, beginners or.
Younger, less experienced writers, huh? Younger or less experienced writers.
Yeah. Um. Is there, somebody was asking me one, a couple of weeks ago when I was down there, um. Is there a need or interest in kind of, um, putting any arrows on the pump track stuff to show which direction you're supposed to be riding in or?
We explored it quite a bit and decided against it. They've kind of decided a use and a flow in there. It can be written either way, but they really kind of worked it out amongst themselves. And the way that they're using it down there. And the, the challenge is if we start painting all over, it is going to get worn and rubbed off. And then we're going to have to line that stencil up just right to put it back again.
Yeah, I knew they could be written, you know, different directions and stuff. It just, one of the moms asked me and I was like, what, you know?
Mayor, the change you asked for to yield to pedestrians on line two, could that just be fit into the one B section? Easier under speed limit? Said for passing slower riders. Cause two is specific to pedestrians. I just didn't want to muddy it up by including non-rider or riders with pedestrians.
Two could be titled as just yield and then a bikes, e-bikes and scooters must yield to pedestrians and other users at all times.
That would be fine too.
Okay.
Um, Tiana, I have a question about.
I'm listening.
Okay, um, uh, we, we've spoken about branding at one point. That's kind of a big deal in the action sports world. If you, you stencil your brand all over the skate park. So when videos and all those things are coming out, that people know. And, you know, people see the brand and they know where it is. Is that something we're still looking into or?
Kind of the same concept of it's going to get worn off and we have a, a kind of a fairly detailed brand and logo. We were worried that we wouldn't be able to line it back up and get it painted back on really nicely.
I think one suggestion for that is, um, again, getting this. I think one suggestion for that is, um, again, getting this, um, Basecamp Ambassador Program, where they've got a lot of, you know, t-shirts, hoodies, hats, blah, blah, blah. And so have tho- that logo be more visible at the skate park itself, and so then, when you're talking about videos and all that, when you have those folks wearing that swag, that gives you more visibility.
I can see that, and just Michael Archer is an expert as, as a, and he does it every year up on his campus, who's on your advisory board.
Is that at Windows?
Um, he's an expert, and they do it every year, and so.
And maybe it's not in the ground, maybe it's above the ground, but out of the line of.
It should be, it should be on the ground.
So that, so that you're seeing it up and sideways, or just any view.
It's just one of those, like, any, anyone who's anyone in this industry, like, uses their branding to the extreme, because you want that visibility, you want the recognition of where.
Even at the risk of having to put it on every, since it's not.
I think, yeah, I mean, I don't know, are most of their stuff indoors or outdoors, callouts?
Hey, this is an area where I'd defer to land these shoes, definitely, this is our world.
Yeah. But my world is like, we, we did stencils around all the drain, uh, waste, stormwater drains.
Yes, but people weren't choosing videos of your world.
And we had, uh, we had more strong footage.
Strong footage, exactly.
Some other stuff on the Tickle Creek Trail, oh, that's right, on the, where it went on the sidewalk and everything, and it wasn't done very well to start with, and, and then it didn't last.
They have different types of paints and stuff.
Yeah, like I said, Michael Archer on the board, is an expert, he does it every year.
Yeah, well, and, and getting more volunteers to kind of help maintain it are really important, and I do, you know, wanna kind of get started on the, I mean, I, it's already started, but the Basecamp ambassadors, so that a lot of these issues and, you know, kind of sharing those things and just talking with folks is really helpful.
I think once we have a, a permanent, um, park director in place that can help sort of guide the implementation of that and help facilitate it, I think that's gonna be a good first step for them to get, um, introduced to the community and make some good relationships, while also freeing up a little bit of the limited staff capacity that we have in the short term, but it, it's certainly on our list to, to get that, um, off the ground, and, uh, Council Hanley will look into the decals or painting or whatever the right terminology is, stenciling, we'll, we'll look into that and see where we can best implement that and what sort of a routine maintenance schedule would look like, uh, on the operations side of things. Unrelated to the conversation we're having, but related, uh, there was a comment, gosh, two months ago, maybe, of around a, a bike repair station and the lack of having a bike repair, um, amenities, that was, that was Council Hopenson, we have a path forward for that, can you speak to the implementation of that?
It's in my office.
It's in your office.
It's in my, it's here, I'm just short staff right now, but it will be getting installed soon.
Please.
And two things on, on kind of related point, I, I was there a couple days ago, and these three young boys all on bikes, no helmets. And I was just talking to them, and they were playing with my, I always introduce the park mascot Cedar dog, and, um, and Lieutenant Craven, this is also kind of just a share, but I just pointed out to them, because I had to do the research, as the, and the, you know, previously Sandy Fire Department, but now the Clackamas Fire Department does have helmets available for kids uh, for, that, you know, need them and don't have the money and all that, so I told them about it, and I just saw them today, they were, I was stopping to get some money out of the ATM at Clackamas County Bank, and, and, you know, I, they were, they were, uh, crossing the street on their way to the park, and they all had helmets, and so I stopped and chatted with them, and I go, oh, so they do have helmets, if kids don't, you know, so if we do see kids down there without helmets, and we, you know, say, do you really need a helmet, or do you have one at home, or whatever, um, you know, not that we wanna kind of advertise that, the Clackamas, the fire folks said, we don't wanna advertise it all over Facebook, but for folks, for kids that don't have helmets, um, pointing them in that direction.
They're cheap, they're fifteen, ten, and five, depending on the sport.
Yeah, so, um, that was kind of a neat thing.
That's great.
Um, and then on the other point, uh, what was it? You know? Um. I can't think of it, am I, not important. Thank you, though, I mean, it's just really working, I, everybody's having so much fun down there, and, yeah, like Lori said, you know, most people just kind of work out their issues or, you know, behaviors to kind of, you know, reduce conflict, and it was just really, it's just been so neat to see all the kids using it, so.
I was down there this afternoon, and it was really neat to see the entire range of age of users down there.
Yeah, all ages, all abilities.
That's great.
Great. Okay.
All right, well, I think we have what we need.
Let's do a five-minute break, uh, for and get back to some of the fight.
Thank you.
Okay. Go on, start with the agents, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, I haven't seen this packed of an agenda in a while, so hopefully we could get through this fairly quickly. Um, our, uh, agenda has, uh, a public comment, uh, the consent agenda, presentations for Officer Ferguson, um, ordinances for alternative wastewater systems, flood, slope hazard overlay code changes, um, a resolution for, uh, food and beverage policies, and old business is a second reading of the transient room tax, new business is, uh, pavement management, pavement maintenance contract, and a, um, fiber optic contract, uh, for improvements to the fiber optic going to our water, uh, treatment facilities, and a special, the, uh, spec- policy adoption for the special service contract program guidelines. By finalized by a, I mean, a report from the city manager, many council reports, and staff updates. So, um, first of all, are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, um, do we have any public comment?
Jeff.
Does anybody here in the, in the audience have public comment?
Okay. And there was nothing received online. Would you like a quick roll call, Mayor?
Oh, yes, I think that's.
Can I, can I, before we do that, can I make an, a motion that we change the agenda? And move item number four up to item number two? For some of these folks, yeah, a lot about their days.
Yep.
Unless they wanna listen to wastewater. All that stuff.
Sure. Okay, roll call, Jeff.
Okay, uh, Council Maiten.
Present.
Council Smallwood.
Here.
Council Sheldon.
Here.
Council Ramsayer.
Here.
Council Hanley.
Here.
Council Hopenson.
Here.
Mayor Walker.
Here, one of these days I will learn to read the agenda in order. Okay, no public comment then? No online, great. Okay, so the next thing on the agenda, based on the amendment just mentioned, is let's go ahead and get started. We're gonna go over here so people can take pictures of us, we're not trying to leave the room or anything like that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, as you know, but for the benefit of anyone else here, uh, Chief Husky is at the FBI National Academy, and so I was, in my capacity as acting chief, I felt it was important to recognize Officer Ferguson promptly for, uh, what I'll read to you, uh, here. On Friday, July eleventh, twenty twenty-five, Officer Jordan Ferguson responded to a report of a twenty-two-year-old male who had lost consciousness. This happened outside of the city limits of Sandy, and while Officer Ferguson was on his way into work, Officer Ferguson was actively monitoring his radio, ready to assist, and was the first responder on scene. Officer Ferguson immediately began chest compressions until medical personnel arrived. Clackamas Fire Lieutenant Mike Gasperson said, "I wanted to pass along details from a recent cardiac arrest call that Engine three oh eight and Squad three nineteen responded to at the Carver Store." The patient was a twenty-two-year-old male who was with his sister, purchasing ice for a river float, when he suddenly collapsed inside the store. Officer Jordan Ferguson arrived within minutes and immediately began high-quality CPR. He continued compressions for multiple rounds before we arrived. As the incident progressed, we delivered a total of four shocks, including a dual sequential defibrillation, which resulted in an immediate R O S C. I assume that, I assume that means.
Spontaneous circulation.
Yeah, so. So his heart started beating, yeah. There's no question that Officer Ferguson's actions were instrumental in this outcome. His quick response and high-quality CPR gave this young man the best possible chance of survival. I wanted to make sure his efforts were recognized as he truly went above and beyond. And I believe I received an email from Council Smallwood, uh, just a few days ago, that said that man went home from the hospital.
Oh, okay.
Sandy Police Department policy allows for a life-saving medal to be awarded to any police department employee that performs an exceptional act under emergency conditions, wherein a service is rendered that results directly to sustaining a human life. Officer Ferguson is with great pride that I award you this life-saving medal for your actions on July eleventh, um, eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Congratulations and thank you for your dedicated service.
Thanks.
Ready? Here, so, I don't know, is there any pictures? Is there?
I get like two babies.
Yeah.
Smile. Come on, give me. Don't look at me, look over there.
Hey, look at this.
George's smile.
Oh, good.
She's like, this is scary.
Sir Ferguson, we're so proud of you, thank you so much. He has a lot to him.
Now you're free to go.
Thanks, Officer Ferguson.
Did you want more pictures? No, it's okay, we'll go.
There's prettier scenery outside. Take advantage of.
Grab some pizza. That's so impressive. Amazing.
I like these definitions that I've been doing.
Yeah. Just, you know, the fact that, gosh, once they got out on the river, that would have been a totally different outcome. Really thoughtful. Okay, um, the next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda, which has the meeting minutes and the resolution for utility billing practices for city accounts, um, may I have a motion to pass the consent agenda?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
I will second the motion. I have a motion from Council Hopenson and a second from Council Ramsayer to, uh, um, adopt the consent agenda, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes, thank you. Okay, the next, um, item on the agenda is alternative wastewater systems. The public hearing. So the opportunity for the, to offer public testimony will occur after the staff report concludes. For folks in the audience who are online, the opportunity to offer public testimony in this hearing will occur after the staff report. So, um, I'd like to open the public hearing, um, for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seventeen. The time of the open hearing is seven fifteen P M. And I'd like to call for any extensions to declare. Hearing none, are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing that, um, I'd like to call for the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. As we all stare at each other for a quick second.
It says, call for the staff report, hearing none, make me consider the staff report.
Uh, yeah, thank you, um. So the council has had, uh, a couple of work sessions, I believe, on this topic, um, frankly, trying to find creative solutions to allow certain tax and development to advance while we're in this period of moratorium. Um, the Planning Commission received this presentation and provided some minor feedback uh, about a month ago, three weeks ago. And so tonight before you, we have the proposed language regarding alternative wastewater systems, uh, in the hopes that we can get this across the finish line and provide one additional path forward for projects that are itching to move forward now. Um, so I'll turn it over to Josh, I guess, and can you go on delivering the staff report?
I can, sure.
Sure, I think that's what we agreed on internally and just didn't.
Okay.
Turn it over to Josh.
This should all look very familiar to you, um, I, I believe the language actually in front of you is the same that was in front of you at the work session. Um, and it was presented to Planning Commission, as Tyler mentioned, and they recommended approval, they did have two areas where they suggested that you may wanna consider some changes, and we can talk about that. Essentially, what this would do is, this would amend the city's development code to create a new process for alternative wastewater system permit approvals. It will, uh, be an application, it would go first to the Planning Commission for recommendation, and then go to the city council for final approval. Um, it defines what constitutes an alternative wastewater system, uh, has a number of criteria that apply to provide a more streamlined approval process for two types. Types that we expect most likely to be, um, proposed, which are commonly known as porta potties and gray water systems. And then also allows for developers to propose some other type of alternative wastewater system, and if they do that, and there's some additional criteria that apply. All of the criteria are designed to be, uh, flexible and discretionary, uh, because these aren't housing applications, that they're allowed to be discretionary, and the idea there is to allow the city to be able to evaluate each application and make sure that it is meeting the city's goals for this program. And then finally, the, uh, well, two, two more things, the, the code sets out, uh, some conditions of approval that would be part of an approval, including when and under what circumstances the system has to be removed or connected into the city's, uh, permanent wastewater system, and in the final section is enforcement mechanisms for the city to ensure that these systems are operated and, uh, comply with those requirements. The two things that the, uh, Planning Commission raised as possible areas for you to consider making some changes were, uh, one, they, they initially was phrased in terms of making sure that the porta potties are cleaned at least twice a week. And then the conversation expanded a little bit from that into, um, well, do there are different kinds of porta potties? Maybe they have different necessary cleaning frequencies, just wanted to make sure that these are being maintained in a in a presentable manner for, um, for staff for having to use them on these sites. And then the second one was, the way this is currently, uh, set up is that for commercial and industrial users, it can only be for, uh, the types of businesses where the public is generally not received. And it, and it seemed to some Planning Commission members that you may want to allow them a little more broadly than that, uh, in some circumstances where it's not like a restaurant where the public is using the restrooms regularly. Uh, the type of commercial establishment that welcomes the public, but does not generally result in the public using that restroom facility, uh, and I think one of the examples they gave here was, uh, auto parts stores, convenience stores, people are making quick visits, they're not usually using.
I was thinking of like, like, Plaid Electric in town is a great, you know, kind of example of someplace where somebody's just gonna come in to buy some stuff, but may need used facilities while they're there, and so, yeah, I could.
They may, but rarely.
Yeah.
But a convenience store, you know, that's where you stop to bathroom for, you know, you know, gas stations and convenience stores are kind of a different.
Convenience store might not be a perfect fit into that example of, uh, you know, where the public doesn't generally use the restroom, I, I, I think maybe it depends on the person, whether they're willing to use the convenience store restroom, and there's examples of.
But, but hardware store.
But the, those were the two examples they mentioned.
Yes, but an auto parts store or a Plaid Electric, that sort of thing, the public goes in there, but they don't generally use the restroom. Um, so those are the two things they want to suggest that you consider, whether there's some additional flexibility you want there, um, if that's something interested in considering, we have worked out some language that you could consider, um, didn't that. We have other ordinances, uh, prepared in, in the event that you decide to incorporate one of those or both, or, or neither, then you can just leave it as it is. That's it.
Okay, um. Talk, talk about public testimony for this, um. The, this evening, we have two public hearings, I will read you these instructions for how to provide public testimony this first time, but please note, these instructions will also apply, apply to the other public hearing, which is, uh, the, is that the, um, fish?
Yes.
Yeah, a flood, slope hazard overlay code changes. Um, the process for public testimony, each person providing testimony must provide their name and address for the record. If you do not wish to state your address publicly, you must provide it to the city recorder before you begin your testimony. This can be done either in person or via email, that recorder. This can be done either in person or via email at recorder at C I dot Sandy dot O R dot U S. If you dock documents that you wish to be considered by the council, they must be formally placed into the record of this hearing. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder at C I dot Sandy dot O R dot U S. And staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. Please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. Find a simple state that you agree with the testimony of a previous speaker. To offer public testimony for those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand to indicate you would like to speak. If you are attending online, click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you are attending via, by a telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I will call on each person when it is their turn to speak. Each speaker will receive up to five minutes to testify. The city recorder will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. So I'd like to call for public testimony now on the proposed ordinance. Is there anyone here who would like to testify? Nally? Nope, okay. Jeff, is there anyone online who would like to testify?
Uh, no, Mary, I don't see any raised hands online.
Very good. Um, I'd like to call for motion to close the public hearing at seven twenty three. I have a motion to close public hearing. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. I have a motion from Council Ramsayer to close public hearing. May I have a second? Second, second from Counselor Anley. Um, all those in favor, vote aye. Against, vote nay. Public hearing is closed. Okay, call council discussion. Questions or comments?
I'd be for the uh, for putting some kind of language in there to about keeping the. Uh, porta potties clean, because I can imagine out in the country, it doesn't really matter, but when you get closer in town where we may have somebody. Wanted to build something or revamp something, it could be in city limits and that, that should definitely be monitored. Um, so I would support that.
And I would also, I would second that, and then I would also support expanding. Um, the use of these systems to, to other uses.
Where the public may.
Where the public may, yeah, exactly. Yep. Because that's just, that gives us more opportunities for commercial development.
I have a question about the practicality of this, the way it's written. Um, it, so if I'm building a new facility. Meeting this criteria, I'm coming for this exception. I, I'm going to have bathrooms in my facility. I'm going to have floor drains in my facility. Uh, because that's just part of the code. It's gonna be required for whatever it is we're building. Where does it go? If I'm off the floor and I dump it. Where does it go if it's not connected? Or if somebody runs into the urinal and uses it. A worse scenario, probably real. I mean, honestly, that happens on construction sites before they get outdone, so yeah.
I don't have a good answer for the bathroom side of things. The intent was to not have any connection. Completed through there, so whether that is no fixtures in place or some sort of dead end.
But if the, the way it's written, it requires the fixtures to be in place.
Right.
So that's, that's my concern is now you have bathrooms. You still need water, you're going to have running water. To the site, because you have water hookups that would be live. Uh, good.
As I say, I think they should just be locked.
But to the more pertinent question is the floor drains, which. Hadn't been considered yet, but in review, we would make sure those are connected to the gray water system or some other.
I mean, you could.
Yeah.
Connect on, you could require completely separate rough-in systems. One for gray water, one for black water. I don't think that violates the standard. Commercial code. I think it would allow it, but it's certainly not.
Yeah, it should allow.
It adds cost.
Yeah.
So, and that goes along with our previous conversation with, it's likely that somebody that. Puts the effort in to install a gray water system in their business would want to keep it afterwards. And not just delete it afterwards. So then those fixtures that would naturally hope to that would continue to be used in that sense. So the separate plumbing isn't as big of an issue with those.
I, I'm confused. You only use gray water in term I've not really. Understood it. My understanding of gray water is that it, it does not include any sanitary waste.
Correct. That's the definition in here.
Right, but that. That's not really how it's used necessarily. And then sanitary waste or black water is the waste from toilets and urinals. So if we. We're, we're gonna allow them to have water, right, to the site. So, you know, going back to your.
They'll probably have to to meet the other code, whether it's fire or any other, or even just part of their industrial need. They'll need water.
Right, but then like you said, you know, sinks and whatever, where is that going? I mean, we've got the porta potties and the little hand washing stations out there, that's great, but if they have water. Inside the building, where's that going? That's a gray water. Well, I know.
I mean, I thi- I think it's a good point. I think though that. The solution would be to have an agreement with them that they're not gonna use the restrooms and that they're gonna be locked. Uh, we had, we had an example just a few years ago on Bluff Road. The house has since burned down. Well, since burnt and then was removed across the middle school. Um, that gentleman's septic tank failed and in the middle of the night, he just plumbed in. Basically a dump. Just a dump line. And so his raw sewage is just going dispersing, right? Oh, and then so another night, we got a call and he was trying to connect it to our system illegally. So, I mean. I guess my point is, is that we run into all sorts of illegal stuff all the time. Um, so we're pretty well versed in handling it. I do think it's a really good point to bring up. I think we would just have an agreement with the property or that they can't use it, and any violations of that would be subject to fines. You're right, though. Somebody might use it, and then where does it go? I don't, I don't know. Just into the ground, I guess.
To think through the contingency.
Yeah.
Will happen.
Potentially, yeah.
The second part that I expressed uh, to Tyler earlier today, related to this, it's just that incidental or that the. The, the natural consequence of our actions of, of creating gray water, whether it's form up on the floors, you know. You got ten, they're gonna mop the floor. Where's that go? Where do I dump it? We just gotta make sure that the, the system thinks about everything, not just. The porta potties and the. That when the planning commissioner uses it, it's a holistic solution.
So I want to note that one of the approval criteria is that the. System proposed will adequately protect against environmental contamination.
Yeah.
So they're going to have to. Explain, be able to explain to you, this is a question you can ask them. How are you gonna make sure that your system doesn't do this? I, I, I'm not a engineer or a plumber, but seems to me that there's, there's pipes that it's gonna go into. They're gonna have to have some way to get it out of there. If it goes into, if it goes, because it's gonna be a, a block at the end of the pipe, right, before it can go into the city's system. And so it's gonna collect there. They're gonna have to have a clean out, is that the term for it, to be able to get it out of there?
We have to go somewhere too, so. Yeah, it all flows downhill quite literally.
Other question? Yeah. Kelly, what, what's the benefit? So like, we have several people. In town who are on septic systems residential.
Oh, we have a lot.
Yeah. And so what is the benefit of telling these commercial? Businesses that. Once we have E R Us down the road, that you will have to connect when we don't force our residential. Septic systems to do the same thing.
Yeah, I think, I think we purposely wrote the language a little bit. So be that the city council or the cities, I think is what it says, determination on when they have to connect. And then within ninety days, they shall do it. I don't think we put anything in here around once there's the area is available. So I think it can be like on a case by case basis again, like. If we're having a property with a lot of issues, like Dawn's bringing up, which I think is a great point, I think that would be one that we would probably tell them you had to connect.
Which would, that, that'd be a great example.
And then if there's one that they're, they, they're using, let's just say a septic tank system and it's brand new and it's like a year later. And, you know, we're not running into any issues. I don't know.
But it is its useful life.
Exactly, instead of taking up one of the hundred and ninety areas.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure that we weren't.
I mean.
Going down a road of, hey, you have to connect. You know.
Well, here's where, because it does not say, you know, you kind of, you mentioned alternative wastewater systems. But what you don't say in there, and what I think it really does require is to have some more clarity for, for quite a few things. And, and the first one is, you know. The systems, you know, it, it, what I'm hearing is, is it includes portable toilets, portable gray water holding tanks. Uh, for water, uh, hand washing stations. It includes portable septic tanks. But it also includes permanent septic tanks with drain field, sand filtration, or drip system, or other alternative method of spreading the eff- effluent from the septic tank. Is that right?
They, they can propose whatever they want.
And you guys can approve it or deny it.
Depending on.
Right, but, but again, we want, but in my mind, we want different requirements. For a temporary, you know, portable toilet versus a permanent septic tank system.
Yeah, and you, and we do, that's why there's additional criterion.
Kinda sort of, yeah. And there is kind of, like I said, a mixed use of the gray water and sanitary wastewater that, because you kind of talk about there and I'll point it out later. So for the um, timelines of these systems, obviously, portable, all those other ones, portable gray waters, all that. Are short-term solutions and the septic tank with drain fields are long-term solu- solutions that require pumping. Yearly to three to four years as needed. And so what I'm hearing. Is that. What's the? When we say that they can do portable things, because we're gonna have some E R Us open up here, that's. You know, hundred and ninety E R Us are supposed to be open within about twelve months or less possibly. It used to be twelve to eighteen months, but now we're, you know, we, we've been saying that for at least six months, so I, I'm hoping it's twelve months. So what's to stop these people from not just going, you know, forget the porta potties, I'm just gonna go right to the um, septic tank. And I'm not gonna hook up to the um, city system and a septic tank, trust me, I, you know. They can be in there for forty, fifty years. So what's the? So, so that's a permanent. Not hooking up to our s- system.
Why wouldn't we want that?
Well, once we connect aggression with more rate pairs that are contributing as a, as an overall effect on everybody.
Right, that's my argument, though, i- if, if, in my mind, anyway. If we're gonna tell, so if I'm, if I'm one of these individuals who wants to open a business. And I put in a permanent septic tank. We, I don't see how we can tell a commercial business that you have to connect.
Why, why don't we do that to the residents then?
Well, that's my argument, I guess.
So you, there's, there's two different things. There's two different things going on here. So for one, it's not permanent, because at any time, the city can force them to connect within ninety days. So that, that means it's not a permanent solution. Two, most of the residents that are not on city sewer are of long distance away in most cases. From even a sewer mainline. So for them to connect to the sewer, they would have to bring, in some instances, the mainline, a half mile, three quarters of a mile up a road. To even get to their lateral. All the ones that we're talking about so far, like Mr. Gambino's and Mr. Pickings and even potential in Bell and three sixty second. The mainlines are all right there.
Right.
So all you're doing is going to be extending a lateral. It's a different situation than the majority of the residential septic systems.
That's fair. Ball part, what, what would be a cost? Just ball per today's dollars? I'll just do a number.
For a septic system?
Uh, yeah, no, to, to, to connect.
Oh.
For a half mile pipe?
No. No, but you know, say I, say I develop something on three sixty second and, you know, five years from now, you talk. The city says I have ninety days to connect. What's the cost to that?
So with the way this code's written, we would uh, they would have all the infrastructure in place already. So there would be, the actual sewer connection cost would be very limited, because there's. A chunk of pipe that needs to be installed. Basically, it would be like a two-way sweeping cleanout goes in there, ready to go.
Uh, which is why you think it could be done reasonably in ninety days.
Right.
Okay, so the ninety day only applies to the portable restrooms. Or maybe. So where does it say that a septic tank has to be replaced in?
No, it says up to you. So.
Where?
Portable restrooms are, that's, that's number two. That's to connect with the ninety days.
Alternative wastewater.
Number three is gray water can stay in.
Number four.
Life of the system. Number four is anything else, it's up to council. Yeah, so it's your guys' call. So there's, there's no risk on any of this, because it's all your guys' call at the end of the day.
To council discussion, number four, no.
Right there.
Okay, so it says gray water systems may be in place for the useful life. Okay, so that's where I get really confused, because you say gray water systems. And then we already, and I said, oh, well, that doesn't, gray water is just, you know, sinks and uh, showers and bathtubs, not toilets.
So this is gray water with reuse. That's the key. It's, it's not just the collection, it's the reuse of the gray water.
Well, this is, this is where, when you start using terms that mean two different things, it's really confusing. Because what I asked them first was that gray water, my understanding was it only included sinks, bathtubs, washing machines, stuff like that. It doesn't include any sanitary.
Correct. Yeah, that, and, and if you look at the definition section, Mayor, uh, seventeen eighty-four seventy. B three, it actually defines what a gray water system is for this code section.
So in that definition, because it's, it's basically defined as everything except.
Okay.
Exceptions, right?
So it collects wastewater, which up above says s- sanitary waste, includes sanitary waste, right, right?
Wastewater does not include sanitary waste. It's number six.
Okay, an alternative wastewater system.
That does. That's the confusion.
They're different.
Yeah, I know.
They define wastewater as this gray water. They've defined sanitary waste as the black water and wastewater system as both. And that, it took me, I had to read it three times to.
And I just.
Figure that out.
You know, I understand gray water, black water owning a R V.
Yeah.
But this business where you say gray water, but you mean something about, you know, reuse the water for irrigation, which. I don't even see where that's possible if you're talking about a.
So the way the gray water system is defined, it's, it's reused. It has to go somewhere. On that property.
Okay.
Acceptable use.
So what septic tank gets used for irrigation?
It won't be from a septic tank. So the gray water system would, so let's say a business comes in and puts in a septic to handle their sanitary waste. And then a gray water system to handle their water waste. That's the, probably the most unlikely of solution. But they would have two separate systems, one that's connected to the sinks and all the non-sanitary water, which could be reused. Either as irrigation or in their process, potentially something along those lines. And then there would be toilets connected to a septic system. However, I would, I would think that any situation where a septic system's installed, that would be it for them, and they wouldn't be reusing the water, because it would be a septic system. Which is what we're expecting at this point.
Right, so you're gonna have septic tanks installed to deal with.
All the.
All of it.
Yeah.
Okay, and so. What you're also saying though is that they're not required to hook up to the city s- sewer. After they put a septic tank in, is that what I'm understanding?
No.
And we require them.
Unless up to the council.
Okay. And. You know, why would we?
I think the better question is why would they do that with such ambiguity about the city council's decision to split it? If they, if they put in a twenty-year system and, and they only get one year out of it, that's not a really good business case. So they would probably want some more assurance.
Right, and so that's what I'm assuming. And so it's not like something like, okay, the sewer's coming here next week. We need, within ninety days, you need to, you know, hook up. They, they're gonna wanna know when they get the permit for the septic system, before they invest all that money, that. You know, they're not gonna have to spend a whole lot more money to hook up to the city system. Isn't that gonna be part of the process? They're gonna know ahead of time.
When and under what circumstances they have to connect into the city system will be part of their permit approval. So, so if they're, if they're coming, if they're coming, because it's in the conditions of approval assumption. So if they're, if they're coming in for a. Septic system, they're gonna say, I want you to approve this for the useful life of the system can stay in place. And you can say yes or no to that.
Okay, but that's what I'm kind of concerned about here, is when you're talking about alternative wastewater systems, I believe our policy should be, and. Yes, you're gonna have to hook up to city right away, you know, once it's available, or no, you're not going to, and you're gonna be able to use the useful life of that system. I, I don't understand how we'd be able to say yes to one business and no, you're gonna have to hook up right away. But you, you over here get to have the thing for the life of the tank.
So the way it's set up is porta potties because they're inherently not a permanent.
Right.
Solution. You have to. Gray water, because.
That, again, that's.
Inherently is to the benefit of the city to be permanent, it's permanent. For the others.
Septic tanks.
For, for septic tanks or anything else that we're not even thinking of, some new technology or whatever. Uh, the city council gets to decide which bucket to put it in, based on the nature of the system. So they're, they're putting in a forty-year septic system. The nature of that system suggests that they should be able to keep that in place for the life of the system, I would, I would s- suggest.
Okay, so why don't you say that?
But if they're, but it, because we were trying to create as much flexibility for you as possible. Because we can't anticipate every possible system that someone's gonna wanna put.
Well, assuming it's a septic tank of some sort, whether it's sand, you know, a drain field or sand filtration or whatever. Well, assuming it's a septic tank of some sort, whether it's sand, you know, a drain field or a sand filtration or whatever, it's some sort of format of us, something the county would normally approve. And so, again, that's where, how are we able to say yes to one business to do that? That they can keep it and then no, you know, two months later tell this other business, you know what, you're gonna have to replace it.
It's gonna depend on factors like the proximity to the city's, um, mainlines, uh, the nature of the system they're proposing. Yeah, frankly, we, we think, uh, porta potties and gray water systems may be ninety or a hundred percent of the applications you get. Because as we mentioned in one of the other criteria, has to comply with other law. If there's a mainline running right in the street in front of the building, it, I don't, I, I'm not an expert on the the county and, and state laws, we got septic systems, but I don't think they're probably gonna be able to get the approval to put a septic system in, in that situation, anyway.
From us or the county?
From the county. So the other-
I wouldn't assume that at all.
So the other, the other thing you gotta keep in mind is based on the other two work sessions we held, we were advised by the council pretty strongly that you guys wanted to have kind of um, heavy involvement in the decision-making around this. That's why when Josh wrote up this code, he wrote it up for you to have the ultimate discretion on whether you wanna approve or deny things. If you wanna go back to making it a more formulaic system where it's either yes or no, binary system, there'd be absolutely no reason to bring any of these requests before the council. They would all just be processed by myself, AJ would look at them, I might get feedback from Josh, and that'd be it. We wouldn't bring it to planning commissioner, city council, we would just make it a type-two process.
Uh, real quick, um, so why don't we just plug the SDC's fees upfront? So that, I mean, because that seems like that's the real expense to connecting to our sewer system is, is those fees. Why don't we just collect those upfront so that there's not, so that there's not the financial impact of, of doing it later?
I don't think we can legally, because that's when we, when, once we collect that, we've issued an ERU. And I've essentially told them they have.
I, I, I think there were two reasons that we-
Well, what if we put it in like an escrow account or something?
I think they're still buying store capacity.
We're, I think we're thinking to not do it on the front end. One is that, um, I, I think, like Kelly is suggesting, it may be an unlawful exaction because it's not related to the impact of their system, their proposal on the city's wastewater system, because there is no impact. So it's, it's probably an unconstitutional exaction. Number two is, at the time that they actually connect, the city's SDCs may be significantly different than they are right now. And so we want them to pay the SDCs, but likely higher.
Yeah.
And so we want them to pay whatever the SDC is at the time.
I, I understand that, but wouldn't there be, to that point, wouldn't there be a financial incentive to pay it ahead of time then? That way you're kind of giving them that, because I agree, I don't think your SDCs are gonna drop, like, that's just not historically how government works, right? Um, but wouldn't there be a financial, uh, benefit for them to pay them ahead of time, however we manage that? An ERU's a made-up thing, so I, I kind of wanna push back on that a little bit, that's something that some lawyers in the EPA and you guys all made up, that's, that's-
No, that's, that's in the consent decree.
I, I understand, it's made up in the consent decree.
So I don't think it's a made-up thing.
It's, it's an artificially thing that we've made up to track. Like, we, we've discussed that at nauseam. But wouldn't there be a financial incentive to have them pay it ahead of time so that later on, when they, if they put in a septic, there's that, there's not as much impact on them for having to connect? It's kind of that win-win for both of us.
So I guess the, the, the difference here is whether they want to pay or whether we're requiring pay. And I think requiring them to pay an SDC, which is supposed to be for their impact on the city's wastewater system, when their, their proposal has no impact on the city's wastewater system, I think is, is not gonna meet the constitutional requirements for having proportionality between their impact and what we're requiring them to pay. Now, if you wanted to create a voluntary program where they could prepay their SDCs at current rates and they could choose to do that, I, that's probably fine, I don't know, I don't do the, probably good policy reasons too are not to do that, that are above my pay grade, but, uh, and, and tracking it.
The tracking would be a nightmare with EPA.
I think voluntarily, sure. Mandating it, I don't, I don't see how you could do that.
Yeah, tracking that with the EPA would be, when I'm doing my quarterly reports that I do to the EPA, I've already had questions around small little things that are kind of mind-blowing, so, I mean, now, now that we've done several and we haven't had any questions, but on the first few, if you remember, there was like questions about our reporting methodology. And if we were to try to explain to them that people are prepaying SDC accounts for something that might connect in eight to ten years, I think that would, honestly, I think that would blow their mind. I don't think they'd be able to wrap around it.
Okay, I have, I have several questions, a couple more questions, sorry. So what this requires, excuse me? Okay. What? I didn't say anything. Yeah, you did, but that's, that's the problem. Okay, so, you know, let's treat everybody with respect and let them talk. So the point is, is that the intent here is to get our sewer system built out. Whether it's aggression or whatever, so, so SDCs are gonna be really critical to that, and so are, you know, so, so if they come in and say, I want a septic tank instead of this other thing, first of all, it, as my understanding of the code, it says, it says that they will have to provide all the pipes on their property up to the right-of-way, is that right? Now, if they were, um, in the right-of-way, then for example, like, if it was a, gosh, okay, so if it was something off of Three Sixty Second there and Bell and all that stuff, so I don't know, we get, if it was something that didn't already have a sewer line right adjacent to it, they would be required to get the sewer line to their place, right?
In, in theory, um.
They would have to, I mean, like, okay, bluff, bluff subdivision had to put in sewer line and connect to, to bring in sewer from a further place, right?
It, it would be treated as any other development from my point of view. Sorry, it'd be treated as any other development from my point of view. If the sewer was a half mile away, we wouldn't ask them to we wouldn't be able to require them to build a half mile of sewer. If putting a sewer line in is part of their frontage improvements for that section of road, then it would make sense if it's a sewer line extension of, effectively, so we've got an unimproved road, they come in, make their improvements, part of that's gonna include extending a sewer line through the property to and through as part of the development.
I think, I think, I know what you're gonna say. Pretend that this program doesn't exist, they're still have to build the same.
No, 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 but Josh is gonna give you the, I think, what you wanna hear.
You can pretend that this whole program doesn't exist, they're gonna have to build everything they would have to build under normal circumstances.
No, they only have to go to the edge of their property.
Yeah, yeah. This, this is a permit for them to be able to have an alternative wastewater system. As part of their, as part of the rest of their development, application and land use approvals, that's all gonna be the same, they're gonna have to build what they would have to build under normal circumstances.
And so those would be, those would be utilities that are abutting the frontage of the property essentially. So we wouldn't be able to make them extend some a half mile because that would be an offset improvement and
But, but if that was, I mean, that's usually what we would do, I mean,
Thank you.
We didn't do it in, the only case where, where we haven't done that is the Space H Fuel. But everywhere else, like if the sewer line was four hundred feet away, my understanding is they got SDC credits for bringing the sewer line to, and, and for a capacity over and above what they needed for pump stations and all that, they got SDC credit, but that if it was to pay for their capacity, they had to pay for that, right?
If they didn't get like a variance to connect into the system, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm just saying, no, the way it's been since I've been here is that everybody had to connect to the sewer for whether it was a business or a housing development. The only exception that I know of is Space H Fuel.
Well, no, the, no, there's more than that. Yeah, the church right down the street from your house, uh, the, the Mormon, or not the, the, um, what is the church down there, the one on North Glove?
Adventist?
No, Jelvis Witness Church, Jelvis Witness Church, they're on a septic system, just like Space H.
But the, the short answer to your question, Mayor, is, is that everything will remain the same as far as what they're, what they're having to build, except for like the, the two-foot space between where their lateral connects and where the actual, I-
But if they don't have to pay SDCs, this is, it's not the same, because they're not paying SDCs, okay? And so to get the system, let me get the question out, Kelly, before you start trying to answer stuff and you, I haven't clarified the question. The question is, when we're not requiring them to pay any SDCs, how, and, and all they have to do is provide, pay for any pipes to the edge of their property, then how is the sewer in the future, like in a year when we have SDCs or ERUs to give away? How are we supposed to pay for all this stuff between them and the next, and the properties on either side? Who pays for that part of the sewer? Where they've been able to get away with not having it, didn't have to pay an SDC, but these people over here on downside or upside uh, have to hook up to the sewer and then now have to pay for that section of sewer or a pump station or whatever it is. That's what I'm saying, it's not the, it's not does that is that a clear question?
Thank you. So here, here's what you're talking about. So thi- this lot is developed, say they put a building here, and then they build this little lateral out to the right of it, but the sewer's down here, so they can't connect to it. By the development code, when they develop this building, they're also gonna have to put in a mainline for this length from this property line to this property line. They're, they won't, they won't, we can't make them put a sewer line all the way down to here. So when then this one develops and this one develops, the sewer line will continue to extend down and connect, just like it does on any other development site. It's just leapfrogging it because we're wanting to have economic development, and so this lot might sit a little while before there's a connection available. That's what you're asking him.
Can you tell me what, which section is it that says they have to not only do the stuff to the right-of-way, but then also put the main in, in the, in the, uh, right-of-way?
This, this portion?
Yes, that's-
Seventeen eighty-four in the development code.
Not the section we're talking about, another section.
Okay.
Correct, that's existing code, this doesn't change any of that, right?
But if they're not having to pay SDCs, wouldn't normally they get an SDC credit for that? If they were doing it?
Only if it was identified as a, a CIP project in this SDC methodology.
So it is.
Yeah, so this section, so it's just like a little, so it, it, it's just like a collector material that's identified in CIP. If it's in there, then they get a credit, and if it's like a smaller trunk line that's not identified in their, like, local street, they don't get a credit, right?
Yeah, just, just a regular sewer line extension is not SDC credit avail, or whatever the word.
Just like the local road development.
Basically has to have value to more than their property essentially. Like a main trunk line that was gonna go through a property would have SDC credits associated with that. If it's just your neighborhood sewer, it's not gonna have that.
Yeah, I, you know, the, the stuff that you've written in here, where you've kind of made these exceptions and then that they don't have to pay an SDC, which it just seems like there could be, you know, if it's much cheaper to put in a septic tank, we're gonna, than, than to pay an SDC, we're gonna have a lot of proposals.
A lot of requests, not necessarily-
A lot of requests, proposals, requests, same thing.
So can I interrupt your train of thought just coming out? You asked a question early on, what allows us to do this? You, you get one and you don't. And I think the answer was said earlier, I want you guys to confirm that it's because this is not part of the, um, residential housing where we have the very strict set of rules, we are allowed discretion. And as long as we don't get too, I am assuming as we get too pick a favorite and a loser, we could get sued, but in general, we have some latitude, is that kind of where we're at? Is that the why?
That, yeah, and the, and your decision has to be based on facts, not who the person, who the applicant is, yeah.
I know this guy, like, and I wore it, okay. So as long as we have some reasonable criteria that we can make a reasonable case.
I will try to put this in, yeah, what I'm trying to-
Let me hit part two, okay?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Part two is, we wanted to push these guys to give us some option to go after some of these key commercial things, and I just feel like our tone has pivoted from that, instead of looking at how can we enable some of these properties, we, we feel like we're now poking the, the obvious holes, there are many, in going after these properties. And I just wanna double-check that, that it's still our intent to figure out how to enable them. And then, yes, we can look at the, the possible ramifications, but I don't wanna lose sight of the, what we're trying to accomplish.
I think it's well-written.
Right, what?
So it makes sense?
What, I, it makes sense, what I'm trying to, you know, first of all, my understanding was that, that we have a moratorium up, but again, in twelve months, we're gonna have a hundred ninety ERUs. So that hopefully, if our intent is to collectively get these people on city sewer, which I think it is, because that's best for everybody, is that everybody's paying into the sewer system, then having the option, which I think we all agreed, to have some sort of short-term in the interim porta potties or whatever until, uh, the hundred ninety ERUs come online, hopefully in the next year, that's great, I, I support that a hundred percent.
Well, let me, let me throw, let me throw a scenario out there, because there's one more missing.
Finish though, because, because then, because now what I'm hearing is there's no incentive for them to apply for portable toilets. There's really huge incentives for them to apply for permanent septic tanks. And then the other thing that's kind of comes into play is, I assumed it was only gonna be kind of processing those two parcels, you know, maybe, you know, we but now I'm hearing, you know, we made it to a much larger, it's not just our industrial land, it's you know, anything on Three Sixty Second, probably short of anything that would require public toilets, is that my understanding, right?
So let, let, let me come back, uh, it, answer the question.
Nothing in the code in front of you has changed with regard to pub- public toilets. There's a suggestion from the planning commissioner that you may wanna consider changing that, and you can. You can consider it, but what's in front of you here is exactly what was in front of you at your last work session.
So, so let me come back to the scenarios that we're trying to address. We've got one industrial plant that wants to come online, where they've got a few industrial workers, good jobs. And maybe for the short term, porta potties might work for that particular solution. That might be an acceptable investment for this particular entity, right, to go after. But if we're talking a big box business over there on Bell, there's no porta potties, that is not an option that's gonna sell a property and get a developer interested, so the question I think we have to ask ourselves at the council, do we want to enable that sort of commercial development now before we get surety on our, however many ERUs we may or may not get, and our ultimate ten-year investment to get unlimited ERUs?
And to add to that, if I may, if we approve this, this system, the other ERUs are still going to get utilized.
They enable other stuff.
And they enable other stuff, exactly, and so those you ERUs are gonna get utilized regardless. This allows us to have more development, more commercial development, which generates more tax revenue.
I would love to see a big box unnamed store somewhere there on Three Sixty Second Bell with a forty-year septic that's bringing in good wage jobs for the next umpteen years and give those other things, those other areas, other, of places, because one entity taking a large number of ERUs into a single septic that has corporate sponsorship and maintenance is going to create a lot less headache on our environment and everything else than a bunch of little one-off entities that may go under and not have the cash flow to keep them up and maintained. Uh, I wanna add, like, so I'm for this, for all the reasons you've just discussed, um, but I also wanted, and what I was trying to ask earlier, and trying to figure out a way that we can financially incentivize them or make it financially more feasible, because the, the rates aren't gonna go down for them to connect into our sewer, because while I agree with everything that Don says, and I think the forty-year septic is better than nothing. I do think there is an incentive to all of our community as a whole to have those institutions hooked into our sewer and helping pay those rates as we all are. Um, because they will drain other systems as well. So, but I also recognize that it's a big investment for them to kind of do both. So that's where I'm trying to go with, if there's a way that we can allow it in the now so that there's a financial incentive, so that the, there's very minimal impact financially for them, because that's ultimately what it's coming down to is the dollars at the end of the day, for them to connect into there, thus also contributing to the rate system that we have, that win-win situation for us both. Uh, because the thing is, this isn't a short-term thing, this is a, a five to ten year, depending on how fast you build this.
Or twenty.
God, I hope not twenty. This is, this is, this is, this is, this, but this isn't a, we're gonna throw in a sewer line tomorrow and we're talking next week, you're gonna connect. This is years down the road, like, I won't be sitting up here when this council's making this decision. So this, this is, this is impacts, I, I think we need to look further down to what that is. Remember, we talked about financial incentives for these guys, that going, the, for these, that area around the Bell Street and whatnot, that we wanted to come back and look at financial incentives, whether it was our urban renewal for some of the lots that may qualify. We talked about waiving some of those special fees or reducing SDCs for these one-offs. I think we have already built in a lot of flexibility to help. I think we have already built in a lot of flexibility to help the right entities.
And we were asking, you're asking that for a council that's not sitting here now. That's who's gonna be making this decision. Potentially, I mean, unless, unless you guys are all planning to go for that.
But, but here's the thing, okay, let's say we get a big box and we really like them, we're happy, and we got half the town working for them, okay? And we're ten years down the road, and we want to cook them up. But we're gonna hit them up because our rates have gone through the roof, our SDCs are now, they're gonna hit them up with a several million dollar charge for an SDC charge. To hook them up. Well, maybe they'd rather run on their septic for thirty years. Well, that council can now make the business choice of, do we want their rates every month? And let's waive some SDCs or not. That's a decision, and there's pro-cons that they can just work through.
Yeah, and that's, that's, yeah, and that's a great example, is that, you know, you've got that ability to say, well, we'd like you to connect. Because we do want the rates, so if we waive the SDC, I'm sorry, you wanted to do that. I mean, a- and again, hypothetical, because I agree, a different council is gonna be making this.
Well, and the other thing is, like, business is like a surety. This is what's going to happen.
For sure.
You know, the last thing I wanna do is, and, and because. The other piece about this is, I think, as a, as, especially as a big name business, if I have multiple choices, because I have a very. A lot of numbers under my business line, I'm gonna have some choice in where I go. And so am I gonna go to the place, it's like, hey, man, they might hit me with a two million dollar fee later on? Plus, I have to put in all this, or am I gonna go down, you know, a few miles up the road and go somewhere else? My point is, I think we need to offer, we need to figure out a way that. I don't really care if they wanna use a septic. I, I, I have zero problems with that. But I think that, that, the problem is, is we need everybody contributing this holistically to move forward. And we have to be, but we also have to offer them some assured, financial assured, right? Not that we are going to come down as these rates go up, and all of a sudden, like, some council's like, yeah, I need that money, boom, I get the thing. There, there's, there's some understanding, there's some expectations that I think we can control right now. And, and move it forward. Does that make sense?
So, so they're all posted and moving on now. Right, so when they do their permit, their request, their application. What I heard Josh or somebody say is, they would have a expected life of that permit that they're asking for. Are you suggesting and thinking that we would agree to that, whatever lifespan, we would negotiate it at the time of the permit? We'll give you ten years, we'll give you the twenty, whatever the. So that it's known, is that where you're going from?
Well, I like, I like. I want, I want clarity. I like flexibility in a lot of things we do when it comes to e-bikes and stuff like that. But I also want the businesses to come in here to know what they're getting themselves into. And I think. That, that's why I'm saying, if there's a way that we can lock them in at the rate today, I realize that from an SDC standpoint, that's not gonna have a huge benefit. But from their business aspect, I don't see how it financially hurts them. I don't like the volunteer program, because I don't want, I just don't like that. And so if that's the only option, then I'm not for it. But I also don't think it's fair that you come in and you invest in a forty-year system. Now, if we wanna sit here and agree that, hey, you put in a forty-year system, you get forty years, and then at that point you connect and, and that. That's fine, and, and I guess, you know, our grandkids or great-grandkids or wherever you're at at that point can make those decisions. But I don't, I also don't think we want that. I think we want connections a lot sooner than forty years, right? And so we, we, we've gotta find, we've gotta remove some of this wiggle room a little bit.
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah.
So I've worked here fourteen years, we've maybe seen a dozen new commercial industrial buildings.
Yeah.
Our bread and butter is residential. That's where we're collecting almost all our, all our SDCs, almost all our utility rates. Ninety-five percent of it since I've been here, the new growth is all residential, probably ninety-nine percent. What's proposed before you tonight, doesn't touch residential, and that's your bread and butter going forward, even where. People, you know, I live here myself and I love this community, but we are. A bedroom community to the greater metro area, and we will get more uh, manufacturing, we will get more jobs, I firmly believe that. But a lot of people will still have to commute into the greater metro area, so. I think when you're thinking about um, finances and how this impacts the bigger picture over the next twenty or thirty years. Because it's not touching residential, I really, based on my experience in Sandy, I don't think it's gonna have a huge impact one way or the other. On what you're going to collect.
I, I agree and disagree. I understand what you're saying, Kelly, but I think that is all the more reason why we have to have stability in our commercial and industrial land.
If the next ten years, we have a hundred and ninety, ninety ERUs coming on in a, in a year. Cause we spent, you know, millions of dollars. Doing these improvements, they're underway right now. We already have, you know, if we do these improvements, we are gonna get the hundred and ninety ERUs. So they're pretty much a sure thing, you know, twelve, thirteen month, whatever, whatever the timeline is. So if we only have eleven, or, you know, whatever the percentage, whatever the timeline is for bringing these in, if we set aside thirty ERUs. Uh, you know, it's like hard to talk about ERUs, you said we had eleven developments, I don't know how many ERUs that is for industrial or commercial, but. Uh, how much did we talk about, like, a, a big box store being? Is it thirty-five ERUs?
Um, it could be.
A Home Depot's eleven, Home Depot's eleven, a Costco's twenty-seven, yeah, so it's, it's all over the place, kind of.
But if we decide to set, you know, seventy-five aside for the commercial stuff.
I'm hoping it's at least that many.
Yeah.
Based on what we've been analyzing.
So that would take care of that, right? Within the next year, they would have that. And so I guess what I would like to say, because I think I agree with a lot of what's said, he said portable stuff to get us through the next, next year and get them going. Then, you know, once we have the hundred and ninety, then, you know, they need to connect to our sewer system, and we're gonna give them those ERUs to do that. So. You know, once, once we're kind of done with all the hundred and ninety, then I'm willing to kind of consider. We have more people that wanna develop, at that point in time, then I'm willing to kind of say, well, it might be another three, five, seven years before we're. To aggression or not. That's when I would kind of say, yeah, let's put in some septic tanks on something else that's coming down the line, because we've got no other options. So that's kind of where I'm coming from is, you know, if we can get these people to pay our SDCs and put it and hook up to the city sewer within twelve months. And in the meantime, do the portable stuff, I'm all about that. I don't think we're gonna need to get, you know, ERUs for Home Depot or whatever it is within the next twelve months.
So, I, I think that's a great point, Mayor, because I was gonna ask, I was gonna interject and ask Josh to explain the process of when this ordinance. Isn't applicable. So sure, over the next twelve, fifteen months, uh, in this period of not having ERUs available. This would be the option for commercial development and industrial development. Let's say we get another hundred and ninety, we're not rescinding this, this code language, but. The normal process of applying and obtaining an ERU would be the default, I assume. And this would be back burner code language for the next time we don't have any ERUs available.
So, uh, with the caveat that we can do this differently if that's what council wants, I think the way that I had envisioned this was. Eat, right now you have basically zero ERUs. Uh, at some point in the near future, we're anticipating an influx of a hundred and ninety ERUs. And then nothing for a period of time. So ERUs are a limited commodity for potentially a decade. And so, the city may wanna have this available as an option for that entire time period. So that you can save those hundred and ninety ERUs for the things that you really, really need.
Yeah, I don't wanna waste thirty, forty, I, I don't, how many you anticipate, but you said it was more than that on commercial, I don't wanna waste our ERUs on that.
What I, what I will say is, I think actually. If the city council's ultimate goal is to have the ability to have ultimate discretion on where and when septic tanks and other systems can be installed. I actually think you should just leave this code section in your code indefinitely. Because right now, how it works is if you wanna get a waiver to it, you go through seventeen eighty-four and you do a special variance. It goes to the planning commission like Space Age did, and they are the decision maker. Now, with this new process. You guys are the decision maker, like here and forever. As long, if you remove this, then it goes back to going through seventeen eighty-four with the special variance, and you're not the decision maker again.
But it's the county that's the decision maker when you're talking about putting in septic tanks.
You gotta get both, you gotta get both.
Right.
And right now, the planning commission historically has had the ability to grant special variances, including for sewer connections. This will remove their discretion there, and now it goes to you guys.
Do we have, do we have consensus?
I like this. I think it moves us forward from where we are now with no option. It does give us. Some opportunity to start working that economic development angle. It, it addresses that entity that wants to do something right now. The issues I have with this have been brought up, and I think it can be managed through the uh, ongoing administration, not in the ordinance.
I agree. Is there a, a compromise to, what I'd like to see is a compromise kind of to what Rich spoke to is this, you know. The septic, septic uh, systems out on Bluff Road are sixty years old. And a lot of them are really, you know, bad, and they, they don't need the old code or anything else. So, my concern is that all this, when we're talking about issuing these septic tanks, and you say to the life of the system, you're talking at least sixty years old. So if we're talking, you know, I could live with, you know, ten, fifteen years or something like that. I don't necessarily wanna go, you know, forty or sixty years old till these, the, till these. Fairly, they're gonna, you know, for a commercial development of a box, big box store, it's gonna have to be a fairly large. System that gets pumped fairly frequently. I mean, just knowing how, you know, how often septic tanks have to be pumped when you've just got a single family in them. Um, and I don't know how big they get with the other one, but I would. Open, I would be open to a compromise to kind of put in something. Is that possible to kind of say that within fifteen or twenty years, they have to hook up to the city? Josh?
We could put some language like that in. I'd wanna a little time to. To craft that language, but we could put some additional flexibility. I, I guess the way it's set up right now is either, yeah, you have to. You have to connect within ninety days of the city telling you to, whenever that is, or you get to keep it for the useful life of the system. Those are the two options. We could come up with, there could be something in between, if that's what.
Can the application permit be, from an administrative perspective, indicate what the desired timeframe is and the approval adjusts that or accept it?
I think that was, that's how that would have to work, yeah.
I agree. Would, would that require a code change, or would that be just an administrative implementation of this?
The, I think that would require a code change because we have just those two options right now.
Well, and the ninety day is just for the.
Port.
Portables.
Right.
Not for the other thing, for the other thing, you've already said it's for the life of the system, right?
No, I think everybody says that.
Gray, gray water's life of the system, porta potties is ninety days. For anything else, the city council gets to choose which bucket to put it in.
And you can always reject it.
But again, gray water doesn't include septic.
Right.
But, but septic isn't one of those either, either, septic isn't a porta potty, and septic isn't gray water. So you get to choose which rule applies. Is it the ninety-day rule, or is it the useful life of the system?
Okay, so, but what you all are saying, or you're recommending, it's the, the life of the system.
No.
No, they're not recommending either.
Okay.
But, but let's be realistic. If I'm going to propose a septic system and make that investment. My business decision is based off the life of the system. So I think the negotiation with the council is. I have choices on what quality system I put.
Yep, hundred percent.
So I could put in a sixty-year system, but honestly, if I'm a big box store, I'm not gonna be around for sixty years. So I'm looking for a twenty-year, thirty-year kind of thing. That's the, that's the, and I think that's the negotiation. We'll approve a twenty-year program. We're not gonna approve a forty-year system for you, because our long-term plans are, we need to hook up, but we don't want that environmental risk, you know, fine.
I get all that, that they've invested this money. I'm okay if we kind of caveat it with, that for the septic systems. For the septic tank installations, it's a twenty-year uh, window that they can leave it in, and then they have to replace it.
So Josh and I were just speaking. Sidebar, I guess, uh, sidelines, you wanna reiterate what we just?
So, I, I think. The, the, the verbiage that we have right now, with what you're describing there, is we would be saying. You're, you're putting in a septic system, we're gonna put that into the bucket of uh, useful life of the system. And then we can specify in the approval what the useful life of that system is.
That's what I was going, thank you. That's, that's what we could do. So that's the negotiation, Mayor, so when it's the back and forth.
But, but. The septic tanks out on Bluff Road are beyond their useful life of the system.
Those are residential, though.
I understand, but it happens the same way even with commercial. If we, if you looked at the commercial. You know, folks that have septic systems, how much of those, nobody's monitoring that, uh, or, and you can't even see what's going on under the ground. Okay, so you, so the ability to kind of deal with the issue is. Is very challenging, and I, I just don't understand why we would just basically allow that problem that could be festering in there to go on.
Think it's because we don't wanna get in the way of a reasonable business decision.
Right, a twenty-year life.
That may or may not be reasonable. We're not the ones architecting and designing it. Maybe a twenty-five.
Well, you know, somebody wants to make a motion, I'm not going to necessarily agree with it, and I understand, I'm probably below.
It's okay, I'm good, I'm just, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion. I, we need to approve the first reading, correct?
Yes.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number tw- two thousand twenty-five dash seventeen.
Awesome, good.
I'll go ahead and just retroactively perform that reading. So this is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, and ordinance amending chapter seventeen point one-two. And seventeen point eight-four related to alternative wastewater systems.
Okay, I have a motion to uh, uh, approve the first reading from Counselor Hokinson and a second from Counselor Smallwood.
Other, other way around then.
That way around?
Yeah.
A motion by uh, Counselor Smallwood, a second by Counselor Hokinson, to approve the reading of twenty twenty-five dash seventeen. May I, um, all those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. A motion to approve the uh, first reading. Passed, but not unanimously. Okay, thank you.
So when we, when we bring this back, and that's a meeting. Um, is there any interest in considering either of these two planning commission suggestions? Do you wanna have a conversation about that now, so we can bring back? The specific language based on, like, the one ordinance based on what you support?
A convenience store, I mean, here's where I, I have a little bit of a tartred weakness. Because what we were talking about in the original was these industrial parcels over here. We all wanna help that out and get it going. But now we've kind of opened up, you know, and, and then in, in the code here, your proposal is that it has to be in the economic development plan as a. What was the term you used? High priority or some focus area, something, something like that. Which again was the industrial, uh, metal works, blah, 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 okay? And so. I was okay with that, but now what I'm seeing is this proposal to basically, you know, big box commercial and. Convenience stores and all this other stuff that wasn't a part of the original.
Well, that's it. That's not the staff's proposal. That was the planning commission's recommendation.
I got it.
Let's stay the course, Mayor.
No, no, I got that. I got that. But, but it, but it was part of what you all just voted for.
No, no, we did not.
No, we didn't.
We did not accept those amendments.
No.
We went back to.
It was, it was based off of, off of the reading of what it was.
Okay.
With no amendments.
I apologize, you all are right about that. I, my mistake. Um. Okay, so, all right.
Do we wanna take five?
No. Okay.
I would take five, if that's okay.
Sure.
If there's a second.
Sure. Okay, let's just close this off, please. So you wanna know, do you want some feedback on the um, commercial and? Uh. Big box store, what, excuse me, convenience store, and what was the other one?
So convenience store is one of the examples that the planning commission suggested. The language that we came up with, I don't think actually would include convenience stores for what it's worth. The language that we came up with as a suggestion that council wanted to consider was, uh, to change the language from. Now, where the public is generally not received, to the public generally is not anticipated to regularly use the onsite restroom facilities.
Most, we voted on this, the motion we'd like you to bring back. I mean, I, otherwise we need to open the discussion, we go back. That's what we discussed with that, for basic first round.
Okay, and then the other issue was the maintenance, do you wanna be able to require, require. Evaluate the maintenance program as part of your evaluation.
The maintenance of the, of the septic?
Or the porta potties or the gray water or whatever.
Oh, the, the, like, the cleanliness aspect of it, you mean?
Yeah.
Can't you just address that in other sections of the code?
Would the porta potties be temporary use?
Yes.
I mean, I think, I personally think everything that's been discussed is, can be addressed through. Condition of approval eight, which is such other conditions of approvals, the city council may determine necessary, ensure compliance with the per- approval criteria and the purpose of the rule section.
So they could all, yeah, they could come and say, hey, we've got this, and perfect, thank you, Kelly.
And just one clarification, because I, so. You're, you know, there, there was a request to broaden the allowance for commercial and industrial uses where the general public is received. Okay, so that was not, but what I've heard, though, is what you all are talking about is that the septic tanks. Could be used in a big box store. So that's where I get confused. What's the intent? It is to intend to. It is to intend to allow a big box store where the public is definitely going to be needing to use the restroom, right? That's where I get confused.
Without that change, the big box store is not going to qualify for this program.
Wait. They, they need a septic because they're not having porta potties out of the higher.
Right. No, not the porta potties, but for the, the, but they can do a septic tank, right?
Exactly.
The, the code as written is only going to allow commercial and industrial businesses where the public generally is not received. It's not going to allow a big box store at all.
Okay.
That's, no.
That was kind of important.
It's kind of important.
You know, you guys.
Yep. So.
Which is.
We already voted on it.
Well, no, we just closed the public hearing.
No, we voted on it. We closed the first reading.
We just did a first reading.
Right.
You go down a first reading, at the second reading, you can make additional changes, amendments.
But I meant that's for another night, right? Is that what you mean, Lauren?
Yes.
That's what I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, Josh is just asking if you would like us to bring that back so he knows what to prepare.
Yes.
Yeah, that was the discussion that kind of got everybody over the hill.
Thank you for asking multiple times.
Big box retailer quicker. That was the phrase. That was the phrase.
But honestly, that's why I'm so confused, you guys, because what does it mean? You know?
No, I, I.
And you all just voted on something and yet you didn't realize what it meant.
And we vote, we didn't vote. We, we closed the public hearing for the first reading. There was no vote.
Don't find. I bring back my motion, let's take a five.
I will second. I'll second. Thanks.
Our next agenda item is the public hearing for flood slope hazard code amendment changes because of FEMA. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one-six. And I've already read the process for opening for comments, but I'll go ahead and open up the hearing for, the public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one-six at thirty. Are there any extensions to declare? Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none. I will call for the staff report.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to keep my remarks very brief and then kick it over to Kelly. Essentially FEMA was required to implement changes to the national flood insurance program. And because we participate in the NFIP, we are required to make some code amendments. So the simplest way to ensure that those within the city of Sandy that have insurance through the NFIP can keep that insurance is to make these amendments. Not overly simplify it, but.
I mean, that's basically, that's basically it in a nutshell. I'll just run a few things. I did include a presentation in your packet, although I'm actually not even going to use it, but you can use it if you want to look at it. So as Tyler said, we're in the NFIP. And so we have currently only twelve policyholders in city limits that benefit from those policies. Their coverage is just shy of three million dollars in property insurance. We've been told by FEMA in the past, and I don't, I don't know how accurate this is or not, but that if we do not make the code modifications when requested by FEMA, that it could have impacts to our NFIP participation. And so it's kind of like this threat that they use. I don't, I don't know if it has any legal bearing or not, but we've been told that in the past. And in the past, when they've told us that, we've just made simple modifications to chapter seventeen sixty to be compliant with FEMA's request and then move on. And so this is kind of similar to that. The code amendments before you tonight would only impact the flood slope hazard overlay district and really only impact the areas within the special floodplain area within that district. So it doesn't even impact the, the entire FSH overlay district, just portions of it.
Say that again, just.
Yeah. So the code amendments are only impacting a portion of the FSH code. So if you look, if you look at the amendments, actually I'll just refer to the amendments here. So if you look at the FSH code, the only section it's really impacting is section seventeen sixty seventy. So it's only for properties within the area of special flood hazard.
Floods. So it's not the slope or the.
Correct. Exactly right. Yeah. And so I want to make the, we had a few people reach out to us that received notice and we said, this is only impacting you if your property is in the actual floodplain within the FSH. If it's in the FSH but not in the floodplain, then these, these don't even impact your property. So just want to make that very clear. Just to kind of back up and, and Josh can add to this if he wants, because he's, he's been working with a lot of other attorneys in Oregon to write up the code language. And so the code language presented before you tonight, I did not write, Barry Elsner and Hammond wrote based on consultation with all their client cities, I believe. So it, it's basically being implemented across multiple jurisdiction jurisdictions that BEH represents. So in July of two thousand twenty-four, so almost a year ago exactly, FEMA notified Oregon communities that adoption of PICMS, which stands for pre-implementation compliance measures, would be required prior to the release of full compliance measures. They then gave us a deadline that by December first, two thousand twenty-four, we had to choose one of three options. So the first option was to adopt the FEMA model ordinance. After consulting with other cities and our attorney, we decided that was not a viable option because they did not write a clear and objective code for us. So the model ordinance doesn't work. The third one was to prohibit development in the special flood hazard area. We also, with consultation with the attorney's office, didn't feel like that one would work because we're basically, we'd be, it'd be basically a takings claim because there'd be properties that wouldn't be able to develop at all. So the only one that really works legally, we feel, is the require a habitat assessment and mitigation plan on a permit by permit basis. So that's what we let FEMA know in November of two thousand twenty-four that we'd be moving forward with. And then, as I said, based on the recommendations and advice from the city attorney, we got the language that they recommended we incorporate. We have since incorporated that. And what, one thing to note is the ordinance before you tonight has an emergency clause that it would be effective on July thirty-first, so in ten days from now. And that is because the final compliance deadline that was set by FEMA was July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. So we brought this to the planning commission. They didn't have any recommended amendments and they forward a recommendation of adoption. I don't, Josh, do you want to add anything to that?
Not really. If you have any questions, happy to answer that. That, that's it in a nutshell.
Yeah. So that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay. I'd like to go ahead and ask for a motion for public testimony, given the directions that I gave for the first amendment. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to testify? Jeff, is there anyone online who would like to testify?
I don't see any raised hands, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Get a staff recap and recommendation, please.
At the advice of the city attorney's office and to be in compliance with FEMA and our NFIP program, so none of our constituents lose their insurance policies, the planning commission and staff would both recommend adoption of this ordinance and the code amendments.
Thank you, Kelly. We have a motion to close the public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one-six at eight thirty-six.
Make a motion and close the public hearing.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
I have a motion by councillor Sheldon and a second by councillor Hopkinson to close the public hearing. All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Against, vote nay. Public hearing is closed. Questions and comments?
Mayor, I have a question. On your no net loss description, that's just under seventeen sixty seventy on page fifty-five, under sub bullet A-one, it says the word either. And then you have a list of selections that they have to choose from. They have to choose one of those. And then I assume they also have to provide the answer to number two. Is that what that means?
Correct. So they choose one of A through D, and then they also have to comply with two.
So this is just where I guess my own literacy comes in. Is it, is it either and? Or just either? Because it's not clear to me that you have to do that until I read through it several times. Or is it just fine saying either in bullet points one and two?
So this is one of the things where legislative drafting gets really difficult because if we put an and at the end of, it would be DXII, which is the last part before two. Then it almost looks like we forgot to include an XIIII rather than the and for the two. So the way that we typically write this is one and two stand alone. You have to do both one and two. The either applies just under the, the one part. So this is how we typically.
That's what I'm asking. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
So you have to do all the, you know, VII, blah, 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 all, all those?
If you do D, then you have to do DI through XII.
You can just select one of the options.
Right, okay.
And then do number two as well.
If you do D, you got to do all those other ones, right? Okay, thank you.
One thing I should have mentioned, I don't know why I didn't mention this, that just, the mayor's come up there just spread this. Is this only, and this is, we did have some residents reach out to us, this only impacts you if you're like building a new building or doing a significant addition into the floodplain. So if you have an existing house, it's there. This doesn't impact your property. I meant to, yes, I meant to mention that at the beginning. I forgot, sorry.
That was one of my questions. So it's only for new construction. And so, but I was also, but what I was confused about is, is it the whole lot? You know, given that you're going to be, you know, having some, you know, probably re-landscape or re-grade whatever when they develop the whole lot for the yard. That's included, right? Because we have a lot of lots that go into the flood.
Yeah, it'd only be for the portion of the lot that's being impacted within the floodplain itself. Not for the remainder of the lot that's in the FSH, but outside of the floodplain.
Right. But I mean, usually it's, because we don't allow the houses to be.
If they're built at the base flood elevation, yeah, you can do it with a certificate. Then you have to pay more for your insurance and everything.
Okay. So, but, but, so if there, because what I've seen is a lot of our lots end up being in the floodplain, but not necessarily the houses.
Correct. And, and you're right. I mean, if, if your lot's large enough, ninety-nine percent of the time, you're not going to want to put your house into the floodplain because then you're paying more in insurance. So.
But it doesn't include, you know, lots.
So yeah, sure, correct, Mayor. In, in almost all instances in Sandy, the houses are outside the floodplain and that's why you only see twelve insurance policy carriers right now.
But going forward, it's going to include the lots too.
No, just, just the portion of the lot that's in the.
That portion, but that's usually the backyard. That's what.
Correct. Yeah. Usually you can locate the house outside of it in most circumstances that I've seen. One other thing I should have said at the beginning, don't be surprised if we come back to you on this issue at some point in the near future. There is some litigation pending about this. Not surprisingly, the current presidential administration has a different view of this issue than the prior administration. And so it, it's very possible that after this July thirty-first deadline, there's going to be a dramatic change in direction and we'll come back to you to repeal this or change it or something like that.
That's going to be, my second question is, how does this, you know, given that they haven't even adopted the stuff that they have to do, right? They're waiting, right? They.
Right. This is the pre-implementation compliance measure. It's supposed to be the first step.
Right.
And yeah, it relates to a lawsuit that's been going on for many, many years.
They want us to kind of get us, you know, get everything all wrapped up, but they haven't, you know, and then given where we are politically.
Yeah, but this protects our, those homeowners.
Yep, that's important.
You ready for a motion, please?
Any other questions on this? So let me, let me just have a, what if they come back and say, you know, never mind or whatever? Do we have to adopt a different motion?
Well, so if, if they come back and say, never mind, it's not going to be quite, it, it's, it's a little more complicated than that because the whole impetus for this is a lawsuit from environmental groups that FEMA was not complying with the endangered species act. So FEMA can't just say, never mind, we don't want to do this.
You're going to have to say, do something else.
They have to either do something else or they have to, which there's an effort underway to do, they have to change the endangered species act regulations, which is what, is the premise for all of this. So there's, they're, they're working on that at the federal level currently too. So that could just completely undermine the entire premise of all of this. If, if that were to happen, then it's probably just repealing this change. It's probably as simple as that. Yeah, but I, I'm on a lot of listservs around this and around different planning director listservs. And I'd say about two-thirds of the people I know in Oregon are adopting this and about a third are just waiting. But as a lot of other directors around the state feel, and I feel the same way, is that the attorney's already written up the language for multiple jurisdictions. So all we did was incorporate that into ours. And if, I'm just looking out for our current policyholders. So there, I don't want to get into the political side of things because it's like, I just want to protect our constituents. It's easy to repeal it if we need to later.
And I, and, and just clarify, because most of our, you know, Tickle Creek Trail, you know, bridge and all that stuff is in the floodplain. And so is, can you just clarify what the impact, if any? I know you have exclusions in there for routine maintenance of trails and hazard tree removal and things like that.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't, we're not going to have anything for that stuff.
It's not going to affect, no. Okay, thank you. All right. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Do we have to get a first reading?
We're done with the reading, Mayor?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixteen and ordinance amending chapter seventeen point six zero flood slope hazard overlay district related to the floodplain regulations and declaring an emergency.
We have a motion to approve the first reading.
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash sixteen. I'll second it.
I have a motion by councillor Sheldon and a second from councillor Mayton to approve the first reading. All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Against, vote nay. Motion passes.
Can we have a second?
Yep. Do we have a second reading, please?
Yes, Mayor, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixteen and ordinance amending chapter seventeen point six zero flood slope hazard overlay district related to the floodplain regulations and declaring an emergency.
We have a motion to approve the second reading, please.
I'm going to approve the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash sixteen. I'll second it again.
Councillor Sheldon has made a motion to approve the second reading. Councillor Mayton was the second. All those in favor of the second reading? Vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, vote nay. Motion passes.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Josh, on that one.
It was mainly him.
Yep. All right. So we got through the two hard ones. Now we get to just have some fun here with some.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to be a round robin here. So we've got resolutions for the food and beverage. Tyler, do you want to kind of take us through your round robin?
Yeah. So as the mayor alluded to, a little bit of an unconventional thing we've got going on here, I'm going to give sort of one summary that applies to all three of these resolutions, then we'll just take each resolution one by one. And I don't want to bore you with the same staff report, verbatim, three times. So in May, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission adopted, adopted an advisory opinion, which essentially said, a public body cannot provide, provide food or beverage to its employees, elected or appointed officials unless such food or beverage are made a part of the official or employee's compensation package. Essentially what that means is we can't provide those of you that are, you know, leading a board or commission or the council with food or drink before, during that meeting, if you're working through meal hour. Generally speaking, we shouldn't be providing any sort of food or beverage at a volunteer appreciation event. We shouldn't be providing food or beverage to an all-staff, you know, luncheon type of a situation, which has caused a lot of unrest with electeds and appointed officials throughout the state. There's a, a general displeasure for the Oregon Government Ethics Commission currently. There is some advocacy work happening at the, at the state level for sort of a legislative fix, but that could take a really long time to actually remedy this issue. And so in an effort to address it, Barry Elsner and Hammond, or BEH, has drafted a food and beverage policy that we need to adopt. The sticky situation with this is that you cannot adopt or, or you can't adopt something that benefits you directly, right? And so we've taken the approach of splitting this resolution, or splitting the policy adoption rather into various steps. So I'm going to ask certain one, certain council members to abstain from a vote so that you're not voting on a resolution that directly impacts you or directly impacts your compensation. So with that initial part set, any questions around what we're doing this evening?
No.
Okay. So resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six is a resolution adopting incorporating food, beverage and other items into the compensation package for council positions one, two and five. So when we get to a vote, I'm going to ask that councillors Mayton, Smallwood and Hamley abstain from voting. Assuming that the other four council members vote yes. The motion will pass and those three positions are covered to be able to receive food and beverage and other items. And then I'll stop talking so we can do that resolution and then we'll go to the next resolution.
If you say no, then they have to watch you. All right, can we just move forward?
Yeah, can we do that? Because that would actually be funny.
Yeah, it would be kind of funny, like, Rich, you can't eat, but I'm gonna.
Uh, I move, uh, excuse me. May I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, please?
I move, I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second.
Not to be uh fine, you do, the three who are going to not vote need to actually say, I have a actual conflict of interest.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, um. So I call for that before the.
You can you can call for that, you can call for that now.
Okay, uh, any conflicts of interest?
I do.
And me. Okay, um, so noted conflicts of interest from uh uh counselors one, two and five. All right, um, we have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-six uh. By Counselor Sheldon and a second by Counselor Ramsayer. All those in favor. Of approving Resolution twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, go to the next one.
All right, so twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven is the same exact resolution, except this resolution carves out uh. Positions three, four and six. So I will respectfully ask that counselors Sheldon, Ramsayer and Hogenson abstain from this vote. The mayor will call for a conflict of interest and go through the similar process we just went through.
Um, are there any conflicts of interest for this resolution? I have a conflict of interest.
I have a conflict of interest.
Yeah, I'm conflicted.
Okay, I have conflicts from um Counselor Sheldon, Counselor Hogenson and Counselor Ramsayer. Um, may I have a motion to approve? Uh, Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Counselor Smallwood and a second from Counselor Maiden to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven. All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
All right, on to twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight. Very, very similar resolution. However, this one calls out the mayor's position, city volunteers. And staff, so we can ensure we're just getting everyone covered with this uh final resolution. So the mayor uh. Requesting that you abstain from this vote and declare any conflict of interest if you have one. And we go through those same process again.
So the the mayor can technically still do the purely ministerial functions of running the meeting. But in some instances, they've decided to just pass the torch and.
May I ask, may I ask the counselor president to ask for any conflicts of interest and run the vote?
Sure, I feel so important. Thanks.
Surprise, Counselor Hogenson, I didn't talk to you about this today.
I have a script. Uh, any conflicts of interest?
Wow.
Please note the mayor is a has a conflicts of interest. Um, any motion? On Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
Oh, my God, go for it, go.
Sorry, I'm going to approve Resolution, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
I'll second.
All right, motion's been uh moved by Counselor Ramsayer and seconded by Counselor Smallwood. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I had to think about it. All those opposed? Make it passed. That would have been funny if we just let the mayor.
No more spend drift for me.
Thank you for going through that exercise. I know it was a little bit of a um. Not best use of our time, but it it resolves the issue that is currently before us and we can get back to business as usual. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. And among the mayors and some other staff, I've heard just folks are really frustrated, but. Um, okay, we've got the um next up thing on the agenda. Hopefully it's gonna go fairly uh quickly is the second reading of the. Transient room tax revisions ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two. Um, we have a. Kind of a revised after work and what we saw, so a little bit more information and we have um. Uh, Stephanie, uh, Finance Director, Taylor Law, is present. Thank you, welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Um, so I think you all recall that we had the first reading um of this ordinance on. June sixteenth. This ordinance uh proposed to increase the transient lodging tax rate from three percent to six percent. For the city of Sandy. Um, this uh, that change will uh generate an additional hundred thousand dollars of revenue for the biennial. For the city, um, and that that hundred thousand dollars of revenue is built into the budgets. Just wanted to note that. Um, as the mayor noted at the at the first reading, there was some additional conversations and questions around uh how this. Increase would impact the cumulative tax rate, including the city, county. And uh state rates and how that cumulative tax rate would compare to other jurisdictions that might be direct competitors for. Uh, visitors and those that might be uh booking rooms. So I added a couple of tables uh to the staff report that shows that information. The first table. Uh, shows how Sandy stacks up against a number of other uh local city jurisdictions. Um, note that in that table, uh, the uh city of Sandy is listed at three percent. Just note again, the proposed rate is six percent. Um, and then the second table shows the uh the cumulative tax rate for a few local jurisdictions. That includes. The state rate, which is which is one and a half percent for everybody, uh, the county rate, which is uh. Well, for Oldham County, it's five and a half percent if there is a uh a city tax. And then eleven and a half percent if there's not. And then uh Clackamas County's tax rate, which is six percent. And so. That table attempts to just kind of capture with the cumulative rate when you factor the the local um city rate, the state rate, and then the county rate. And then just kind of comparing those jurisdictions. Uh, so I think both of those tables show um that this rate increase, that this proposed rate increase. Uh, puts Sandy in line with other local jurisdictions, Mount Hood being the outlier, because Mount Hood doesn't have a city rate. But I think it's worth noting that the average nightly rent on the mountain is generally much higher than in Sandy. And so I don't. I think a three percent tax rate likely won't move the needle um on the cost, the total cost or the demand for for rooms in Sandy. So. That'll stop there and uh here for any questions.
Any questions?
You answer all my questions, this is separate. I know I was the one holdout, so thank you.
You want to make a motion? Yes. Okay, very good. May I have a motion uh to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two?
Devin, and I can go ahead and do that reading if you like, Mayor.
Oh, sure.
Yep. So uh, this is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two and ordinance amending Sandy Minnesota Code, Chapter three point two eight, transient lodging tax.
I move to approve the second reading of the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifteen. I'll second it.
I have a a motion from Counselor Sheldon and a second from Counselor Maiden to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two. All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, vote nay. Motion passes. Very good.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, folks. Thank you, Tyler.
Tyler's like, yeah, Kelly, that's the lead.
What was that?
Yep, he's already going, yeah, Kelly, that's the one you do.
The next one is contractual for pavement maintenance. Very good. Thanks, guys.
Okay, so uh.
Yeah.
If you want to jump right in, go ahead.
So uh. In my time here, we've had a five or six hundred thousand dollar biennial uh budget for pavement maintenance. Uh, this is. I screwed up on my screen. What was that, you guys? Cut ahead and mix up. So. Our pavement management system, we have a goal of maintaining a P M I of eighty. Throughout the city. Uh, with recent investments, we have not been able to afford the million dollars a year that was requested. So our budget has been. At this level for the last two biennium. Uh, we are continuing with that currently. The uh. Projects we have out to bid are the next highest on our list of remaining project uh roadways to be paved or slurry sealed. Uh, some key features in this year's package are. Three sixty-second from where we paved previously, all the way up to the intersection with twenty-six. The rough section on Champion right there by the Arco. Uh, and then everybody's favorite mining right out here, we will be paving between Proctor and Pioneer. Uh, one added feature that's coming along with the mining part of it is we will be upgrading the. Traffic signal detections. We're deleting the loops there and putting the radar system in. My understanding with that is that will help ODOT program the lights through Sandy, which should help with the traffic flow through Sandy. I don't know if it'll be a major impact or a minor, but it should have some impact on our traffic.
Positive.
Uh. Other than that, business as usual, we have about. Twenty-eight thousand square yards of slurry seal. And about three thousand square yards of uh grind and inlay paving, which would be how we replace the key places I just discussed. Uh, the slurry seal is mostly in residential areas and that's just improving the pavement that is close to a greater point of failure. Uh, our bids for this came in decent. Our low bid was S two paving uh at five hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-six. Dollars, which is obviously under our budget. Uh. And then the only other factor that's kind of out of the norm is we've added a few point repairs to this year's. Package. So there's a couple of point repairs on Bluff Road, and then there's one over here on Wolf, just. Lane width, roughly about ten feet long chunks of paving, just to. Get some spot areas in an otherwise decent road. Uh. There was interest in the budget committee and the adoption of our budget for expanding our pavement budget. Uh, we do, we have been building up our contingency in the pavement, in our uh streets fund to start managing some bigger projects. There is also this goal of getting us to our eighty again for our pavement management index. Uh, I would like to bring a proposal to the council later this. Uh, later this year, sometime in the fall, to discuss expanding and doing a second year of paving in this biennial. Uh, since nothing was directed from the budget committee or from the adoption, I'd like to bring that forward and ask that later from you guys. Other than that, uh, if there's any questions for me? Yes.
Uh, so. Since this is coming. Six, wow, sixty-ish thousand dollars, seventy thousand dollars under under budget. With the, thank you for sharing that other proposal. Are you factoring in that seventy thousand dollars into that other budget proposal? If not. Since we budgeted six hundred thousand, is there other projects that we could, we could accomplish with that money?
At the moment, it is sitting as contingency for this project, so we do not blow our budget for this year. If something else comes up. Or if there is an opportunity to maybe expand one of these pavement areas a little further than we originally intended. Uh, if we do not use that budget up, that would be factored into the next year's biennial, or not next. Not next year's biennial, next year's paving project.
I I'd like to make sure we use that money.
Of course.
To get there, okay. Um, that's all I have.
Yep.
So on that line, does that mean that you could do a change order towards the end to kind of? You know, if there was another little spot fix or something like that to use that up?
That's the likely candidate would be further spot fixes because they can operate. Individually. Uh, there may be some case where as we are grinding. A section of road, we find that the subbase is worse than we thought, and so the budget may go to that. So. When we close the project out for this year, we'll have an idea of what's left of the initial six hundred thousand.
Um, on the mine egg improvement.
Hmm.
Um, how far does that extend? And those of those two giant.
We're going crosswalk to crosswalk on that one.
Does that, does that fix those two big ones?
That's that's the goal, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. The ones I hit fourteen times in.
That's the one, or those are the ones, I guess.
So to that point, because I've brought this up lots of times, until we do a hard concrete, that's just gonna keep. Coming up, so.
That's a good question. I will need to discuss that with our contractor because I believe there's an opportunity to do some uh. Road basin improvement in that area too, and I'm not sure if that was included in this bid or not.
Because I just, I I concerned because the trucks turning there and the the sideways push on those tires is creating that.
We we have, it's definitely a double effect there. So we have the actual wearing surface, which is doing exactly what you're just saying, but there is an underlying. Issue there as well.
Okay.
So it might be a place to add the extra money.
Yeah, and I apologize that I do not run all of our bids, so I'm not sure if that was specifically included with the contract or not, but if not, that will be. So.
Right.
Great. Well, I'm really, um, I, two things. I'm really glad to see that we're doing the revised revision of the pavement index. Indexing this summer because I think it'll give us a really good place to get started next year. You know, before having to wait for another biennial to kind of come up with another list of projects because there's certainly needed in this town. So thank you. Appreciate it. Can I have a motion to um? Uh, accept the low bid of five hundred and eighty, eighteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars from S two contractors?
I I so move.
For the pavement maintenance program, construction.
Can you read, finish reading it?
And authorize city. Contractors Inc. to complete this project.
What the mayor said.
Second? I'll second. Okay, I have a motion from Counselor Sheldon and a second from Counselor Ramsayer to uh uh accept the low bid, um, as mentioned. To the S two contractors. All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Thank you. And um and we're gonna post this map on the website.
Yes, it's already up on the website and we'll probably flash it up somewhere to make it a little more.
Just like send it down on our Facebook page. Folks know.
That'd be great.
Great, okay.
And then if I can just add one more thing in the same topic, one of the council goals was to ensure the pavement management plans are visible and accessible to the public, not just. When the work is happening, but generally speaking, what projects are in the pipeline, so neighbors know. My road, well, my road's gonna be repaired in two years or whatever, so we are working on, once we have the revised pavement management plan. Uh, getting that on the website and better identifying what what is to come in the future, so.
Fantastic. Great, okay. Next item on the agenda is the uh fiber optic improvements for our waters uh facilities. Contract approval, so.
Right.
Same song, second verse?
Yep, exactly. So for this one, uh, our. Water sources and storage east of town are woefully under. Should play out what I'm gonna say before I start words. Um. The communications to our. Our sites out east of town are inadequate for current and future use. Uh, we currently have regular callouts. That are completely unnecessary for staff and the mill tonight because we lose communications to our water treatment plant. Uh, we are on D S L, I believe it is, up to our Brownell Sping source, which. Doesn't allow us to work in any sort of automated sense. Uh. This project will bring in fiber from twenty-six to each of these sites. It will be bored in place, which will give it that resiliency to fire. Earthquakes, trees falling, those type of things. Give us adequate connections to each of these sites, and this is actually especially at Alder Creek. Alder Creek required for our new membrane filtration facility to have proper communications. Uh, the communications that exist on these sites will serve as backups if there is ever an issue with the fiber system in place. And we'll have time to fix it and not go completely blind. Having that redundancy will be helpful. Uh, another factor at play. Uh, we are connecting to. Our partner's fiber line, Long twenty-six, which is uh C V X. Which we already run service through currently, so we're not expanding our service out twenty-six. We're just connecting to what's already there. Uh, bid for this was. Two hundred and six thousand dollars from North Star Electrical Contractors. Uh, they've worked with us before. Uh, this is. Funded out of our Special Public Works Fund Loan B twenty-four zero zero two, which is part of the Alder Creek Improvement Projects. One of the loans for that project. Uh, any questions?
I I do. Uh, is there a reason that we're not doing our own infrastructure work on this and running our own line like we have with other projects?
Craig's not here and I can't answer that, I apologize.
Yeah, I think frankly, this comes down to a capacity issue. Um, there's other. Work that they're working on, and this is a little bit more of a um. I don't, I don't know if rugged terrain is the right terminology, but just ensuring that the contractor has the right equipment to get through whatever's underneath that soil. Um, and can maneuver through, you know. The geographic region better than we can with the existing equipment that we have.
Our board is a small one, but you frequently have to borrow the utilities for bigger stuff anyway. So I suspect that might be a factor.
One of the shots required for this project is considerably larger than our bore rig as well. Requires considering considerably larger bore rig.
Yeah, I mean, if we can do it ourselves, I would rather us, uh, instead, especially since that's on a loan. That we figure out a way to even reimburse ourselves for our time or or whatnot uh in the future, but if that's due to. The other factor, then I guess.
From a, from a timing and project perspective. This kind of needs to go. Because of where it fits in the line of all the other projects for the water stuff.
Yeah, it's a quarter of a million dollars of.
I know, but quarter of million, it could be holding up other millions. Well, I know, but quarter of nine, it could be holding up other millions, including critical timing on water.
Yeah.
I'll also point out that the Sandy Net guys, they are busy.
Yeah, if there's something else.
Regularly in Sandy Net, so.
If, if there's a logistical, if there's a reason for it, I support it. But if it's just because we have the money sitting there and we've already dedicated, I just want to make sure we're being fiscally responsible, that's.
Counsel Sheldon, to your point, uh, I think I just misspoke, there is both a few reasons why this was not handled by Sandy Net. I just don't, or I lost the top of mind, so I apologize for that.
Um, my question is, um, is Burnout, Brownell Springs gonna? You mentioned it, and I was just wondering, it says Alder Creek, Terrafurne, and Sandercock.
No, Brownell Springs is, I, I, sorry, I use that as an example every time we talk about our poor communications out there. So that, that's just not necessary for our existing project right now, so to the point Rich was making, it's not just trying to throw money at this, we're just fixing what needs to be fixed currently.
No, no, Springs has the best one.
It does.
See, I just have, I just have one question.
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna ask, you said that the, that the budget came from the Alder Creek project?
Yes.
Does, does the uh, the two hundred and six thousand equal what was budgeted in the twenty three, twenty five Alder Creek project? Or is it above or below it for this project?
I'll have to get back to you on that. I believe it's below, and I believe it's considerably below, but I'd have to double check the work. Saying that for certain.
It's been a much bigger budget item. Right, that's why I just wondered if it was, you know, what the level of, of, of it was that we're awarding.
Yeah, I don't have the specifics offhand. I know it was built into the larger budget, as Counsel Hokinson said. Um, and if I remember correctly, was, I want to say a hundred and some thousand dollars less than what? If you were, if you were to have carved it out, um, from within that larger budget, I want to say it was like three hundred and forty thousand or something in that ballpark.
By the savings.
Uh, so yeah, I mean, this is under, under budget, um, and we'll, we'll be able to get to it in a very timely fashion, given that it's a, a contractor.
Thank you.
So the last question, I wish Greg were here to answer this one, I should have asked before, but are there any commercial or sanding out opportunities for these extensions to tie into other businesses, uh, businesses or homeowners or things along the way?
I would imagine so, but as you, as you stated, that's a question for Greg, I'm not sure.
Once that infrastructure is built out, we'll, we're jumping ahead to a future council meeting when we talk about Sandy Net Master Plan and Expansion Criteria. But once this line is built out, we'll be able to better analyze how many homes are we crossing, is there a?
I say that because when we did this, the sewer line down to the wastewater treatment plant, that was one of the things we looked at was, there, there's not a lot of homes, but there's some potential revenue opportunities to pick out for very little, uh, picture.
Hundred percent. The benefit to that project was that, um. Well. That nevermind. Yes.
Captain.
Any additional questions? Hearing that, um, may I have a, a suggestion, may I have a motion? We're using the suggested language in the staff report, please.
I moved to authorize the city manager to execute a construction contract with North Star Electrical Contractors Inc. For the installation of fiber optic cabling at the Alder Creek, Terrafurne, and Sandercock sites for a maximum total fee of two hundred and six thousand with terms substantially similar to those included in the meeting packet.
May I have a second?
I'll second you.
Thank you. I have a motion from Counsel Sheldon and a second from Counsel Hokinson to approve the contract uh for the city manager to execute the contract. All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, vote nay. Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Hey, I have a quick question for you.
Yes.
Know we're closed on it. Can I even bring up the question? Very.
Sure, can I bring up the, sure.
Uh. In the lump sum bids, we have two hundred and six thousand, uh, two hundred and six thousand dollars. In the typed entry, it's two hundred and seven thousand dollars. There's a discrepancy. On my agenda, it's page one oh eight on the computer.
Is that in the example contract? I apologize.
Uh, three dash zero one A. It's the table.
Yeah.
Item number twelve.
I believe that's the example contract, and we have not finalized that yet at this point, so we've, we.
Yeah.
We opened bids for this, the same day staff reports were due, so we just tried to.
Okay.
We, you know, it's, it's always our intention to get contract language in front of the council. This was kind of like, it's, it's draft language, to be honest, that's why the language in the motion was substantially similar.
Thank you for catching that, though. I will make sure that it sticks. Anything else? Thank you all, have a great night.
Thank you. Right, our next uh item is the special services uh contract program.
Uh, yeah, so I will, you know, um. Yeah, I've sort of taken over management of this program, so um. As council knows, we've had the special service contract program in place for, oh, I don't know, probably about ten years, I believe, um. The council has expressed several times that they would like to see um more formal program guidelines and processes in place for this program. Uh, and so what staff has done is, you know, we did a little bit of a research project, looked at other grant programs in other cities um to try to see what we could learn. One that particularly stood out um to me as I was looking at this was uh Oregon City's uh Community Enhancement Grant. Uh, but we did look at others as well. Um, you know, as the council, the council said that they wanted a few things, as I said, kind of a more formal process and guidelines, but other things as well. Um, ensuring that there was alignment with city council goals uh with projects that you uh would approve, and then also ensuring that projects are directly benefiting uh city residents. So what we've done is we've taken a stab at uh some guidelines, and that's what you see in your packet here today. I was going to kind of go through the whole thing with a fine tooth comb with you, but it's getting a little bit late, so I guess I'll just point out some key considerations for you. Um. You, you will see in the guidelines that there is a requirement for projects to meet at least, at least one specific program objective established for the biennium, and I'm imagining if the council will change these objectives from biennium to biennium. But as you can see in front of you, there are four suggested program objectives. Uh, those are uh driving tourism-related economic development within Sandy city limits, um, supporting the health and physical well-being of residents within Sandy city, city limits, enhancing community livability, um, especially safety and attractiveness. Um, and then uh number four, preserving and or celebrating Sandy's history and heritage. So um, to be eligible, a project would need to address at least one of those, maybe more. Um, another consideration for you is that there are uh expanded eligibility criteria. There were very few eligibility criteria in the previous program iteration, so now you see, I'm not gonna read them to you, but you can see them in section two uh listed out there. We've tried to be pretty comprehensive.
Can I ask you a question about that before you go on?
Please.
Uh, when I read uh s- uh section two, uh, so this is like the dental thing that we had at the Adventist Church and stuff?
Yes.
I do struggle with the involve religious activities. Uh, I mean, it's occurring in a church, it's obviously very church-driven, which I think is just fine. I, I'm fine with the words must not promote or inhibit religious activities, but I don't know if, I don't, I'm not comfortable with the word involves religious activities.
Yeah, I'll tell you, uh, staff's intent was to um not limit that program at all, you know, our understanding or my understanding um is that they're not, you know, conducting a sermon or, or doing some sort of religious um act, act, think you could think of the word that I was looking for.
Okay.
Uh, during that program, so our intent was certainly to allow something similar to that um to be grant eligible. Um, but you know, not uh a grant promoting Sunday worship and, you know, coming into increased membership at a local church or something like that, so.
Well, I mean, I, I go the same thing with the, uh, I, I can, I just struggle with the word involve. I, I am totally fine with promote or inhibit, uh, but I, the, the word involve, I think is, is too cumbersome for me.
Um. So I, I like the don't promote. I don't like inhibit, because I don't see.
No, it shouldn't, it shouldn't inhibit the church, and it shouldn't promote the church. That's what I'm saying, or the political activities, it shouldn't do either one. But it should, uh, the word, it's the, just that word involve, because it's going to involve a church. It's going, you know, we have other things that have involved political aspects that we have given money to in the past as well. But it shouldn't be focusing on a candidate or, 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 or against a candidate. Does that make sense?
Yep.
The word involve is.
We're just basically discriminating, yeah.
I would agree with you on C, but I think D should stand involve.
I think, yeah, I think it comes down to what you define as a political activity. Right, I mean.
Well, when, you know, an example that we had is, is where we've had, we funded, helped fund, you know, the Trick or Treat Trail, whatever, and when uh the sponsors allow folks to promote political, a, a particular political candidate that's involving and promoting political activities. And since we're helping fund that, that's not something that we normally do. I mean, that's, that's something that we.
You know, this is such a slippery slope.
Very much so.
And I mean, because as a church, the church I belong to has always taken a political neutrality thing, it's one of those things that's been largely mandated by its five one one C status, so it's very careful and, but it's a slippery slope to say, what can you do? And at what point have you crossed that line?
Okay, well, let me just be very blunt then.
No, I'm not, that's for blunt.
No, no, let me just be very clear, clear about it. Example, the um council, the city council or the Sandy um Chamber of Commerce did the candidate for. That was an example where, you know, it did have, it did involve political activities, but it was something that all candidates were invited to, and it was a public thing, and it wasn't funded by this. But that's an example where, under their uh five oh one C three, they are, they can be allowed to do that. But where they can't be allowed to do it is where they're sponsoring events, where there is definite promotion of a particular candidate.
I was just gonna say, actually, Mayor, the, the last thing you said is an important point, because you said that it wasn't funded. So I tried to make a distinction in the way that we drafted this between, you know, our, is the program being funded? A political activity, which is different from, does this organization also separately do other things that may involve political activities? So the way this is drafted is, what is trying to do is saying the city money shouldn't be going to a political activity. However, that organization, that's their business if they're gonna go do other stuff with other money, right?
Not, I, I, I would, I would agree, you know, for the most part, but, but the, um, I think the, the challenge there is where um, you know, five oh one C three nonprofits, they're doing that, that's a clear violation of the um IRS uh quotes, and I can count chapter, I can quote chapter in verse if you needed it.
It, it was, but it's being reviewed currently, but yes.
Well, and we, we've also tried to say, so in section two B, that they need to be in good standing. So if they, I mean, if they, you know, get dinged by the IRS, I suppose that would be uh, they would lose their eligibility for this program. But we wouldn't, you know.
The way, the way I read this is if I say I'm, I, and, and I, I mean, I don't want, this isn't a mouth to die on. But if I'm not promoting or I'm not inhibiting it, to me, that's just another way of saying I'm neutral. Yeah. And so that's why I say, if we just take out the word involve, those, it, it removes the gray area, it's essentially saying you're neutral on it. Again, I'll, I'll stop now, but that's just the way I feel about those two.
It does introduce some gray area about using a facility or leverage, you know, leveraging people or volunteers or others that might not be.
Involved does.
So you might not otherwise want to restrict.
Exactly.
Uh, okay, I see.
I agree.
I see your point, Rich, I didn't want to, but I did now.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, let's see. Uh, okay, I will move on to a, a few other key considerations. Um, there's a requirement for applicants to specifically articulate in their narrative how their projects will benefit residents in Sandy city limits. Um, there's an acknowledgement also, and as you can see in section three, that, you know, projects may impact the wider community as well, and that's, that's great, that's fine. Uh, but they need to ex, you know, specifically explain to the city how they're going to help uh Sandy itself. Um. There is a uh, a pretty robust um project budget table that you can see an example of in Exhibit A. Um, and it really breaks everything down between, you know, personnel costs, material supplies, fees, so on and so forth. And we are asking them, although there's no match requirement, we, we are asking them to kind of lay out the budget, um, including the matching sources of funding and volunteer uh support. So just kind of painting the whole picture uh for the city council as they consider these products. And then um, one more change that's kind of small, but it's important is um, we're conceiving this now as a reimbursement grants, which is typical for these things, but hasn't necessarily been the case in the past for SSCP. So this would be in a reimbursement basis. Um, they can get uh reimbursed uh twice per biennium. Um, once halfway through and once at the end, and at both points, that would need to come along with the required recording uh that you can see in section eight. There are uh two written reports, one a midterm report and one at the end. And then there's also a requirement to report to the city council um uh at the end and kind of explain all the good work that they've done along the lines that you've seen previously.
Can I ask you a question about that? I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, I'm, I'm actually very concerned about the reimbursement, because if these nonprofits already have the money to do it.
They wouldn't be asking.
They wouldn't be asking. Yeah.
Do you want to speak?
Yeah, that's a fair point. Um, you know, we have moved all of our other grant programs uh over renewal grants, facade improvement, uh tenant improvement to reimbursement based, to make sure that the application is followed appropriately. Um, my concern with funding upfront and, and not at all, I'm gonna die in either, right? But just explain how we got to, to the, what's being presented to you. Um, is that if we kind of check for whatever grant program it is, or whatever agency it is that's providing the service um, and they don't perform that service as it was originally applied for or intended, or um the scope, you know, totally changes, or they just flat out don't provide the service, we don't have really any recourse, other than you're just never grant eligible again, which I suppose is one path forward. Um, so I think, you know, part of this was the, it uh bringing this into a more formalized process, right? It's, it's been pretty relaxed and, and loosey-goosey in the past, so trying just to have a, a tighter ship, but a more formal process to me meant reimbursement. Totally hear your point, though. I'm happy to discuss that further, but that was just kind of where.
One option that I've seen is where um, in those kind of situations, like if they want to purchase uh, you know, a, a stage for, you know, the mount, for the music fair and feast or something, because they've been renting it or something, rather than go ahead and put out the money, buy the stage and all that, one option as compromise is to basically provide an invoice to them, and then uh the city cuts a check to the uh vendor for the stage and, you know, and some documentation goes forward. That, that's kind of neat. There are ways to kind of get around that if they don't have the money upfront. But it really, it does kind of go, because I have been involved with this process for a long time, and there are a couple of instances over the, you know, past where they did receive money and they didn't do the, the project. And so it is kind of important, if we're talking about public money, to kind of have some safeguards in there. But, but also to your point, you know, some of these guys, folks are small enough, they don't really have the operating capital to go forward with it, so.
We could, we could model that after like construction draws on a construction loan, or, or even a fifty, forty, ten split through to where the ten percent is at the very end of the report.
Yeah, I mean, you know, frankly, we're trying to also reduce staff burden when processing additional checks. I mean, it wouldn't be every week, um, don't cut checks that frequently. Uh, but, you know, there's just added workload in the processing of more and more paper, right? So reimbursement is nice in the sense that here's the receipts, here's the metrics, here's my check request. Here you go, closes it up. But our efficiency is not the only um lens that we look through, so. Yeah, that's just the background on how we got to what's being proposed, but happy to do, to discuss further.
Yeah, I'd be more comfortable with either upfront or kept to Kathleen's point, which is, you know, they provide an invoice, because I agree, a lot of these nonprofits don't, don't have the cash, and that's why they're applying for the grant. So.
So, but council's looking for maybe these hybrid, hybrid options.
I, I, I'd be okay with mine, you know, giving it upfront. You know, I, I think in this situation, if they don't have it, we need to kind of sit down with them and figure out a way to do this compromise thing. It's just giving my front that has kind of come back to bite us.
No, I'm fine, I'm fine with like an invoice, providing an invoice.
I think that would be one, but I.
There needs to be a couple, a hundred percent, because like, right as that was coming out of my mouth, I can think of like, hey, we need it, we need it to give, do this, but there's no way to actually invoice it. Right. So, yeah, maybe a case by case.
Flexibility to the the payment mechanisms built into the application in terms of what the funding needs are. If you're going to be over a long period of time, then maybe it lowers our risk to pay it in chunks.
If would you be open to? Generally, payments are made to grant recipients at a reimbursement basis. However.
Yes.
City manager is authorized to negotiate different payment terms. I don't know how to finish that sentence. Perfect, love that.
Okay.
Under the scoring section in section. Five, is it? Section five, application process, the paragraph beginning on the page talks about the story. Uh, since staff will perform and will not be considered, the review committee will need to consider applications. And then it says the city council is responsible for final decision making, but after it's introduced the scoring of eligible. Applications. Is the scoring relevant to the subcommittee, the staff or the council?
That's a great question.
Okay.
My thought was that it was relevant to the subcommittee.
Okay, so I think if you just move the sentences around to that, where that it's part of the subcommittee.
Yeah. My um, happy to entertain further suggestions. My thought, Mayor, would be maybe to make a few changes and like bring it back on. Potentially on consent at the next meeting.
Sure, that'd be great. And I do have one other kind of question for the council one, but do you have the other?
No, that's all.
So one of the things that I was kind of, you know, talking to Jeff about this, because. You know, looking at it, so there seemed to be interest in doing um. Let me back up. You know, one of the parts, parts of it say that um, you know, the focus is on serving um, the. Uh, city residents, right? But then what I've also heard was that, you know, these special event or special events. You know, that are intended to kind of bring in tourists, don't necessarily serve the uh city residents, and so. You know, having some direction on. On that is one thing, is how do you kind of marry those two? Um, and then the second part of that is also the fact that. Um. We have seen. Um, repeated requests for the same type of project. And or and then if we start opening it up to special events, I would imagine we would start getting repeated requests for, you know, helping fund. Special events. So, how do we deal with that?
Want to dump call list?
Well, one of the things that, what like, you know, kind of talking about, okay, what, for example, with the special events. You know, obviously, there's some costs associated with marketing and, you know, whatever it is, whether it's the mountain festival or all that. Um. One things that we could do, and and that was the the example I gave about the stage, I think. Uh, you were talking about it, or, I don't know if it was our stage, somebody's stage, but it was like they had been renting it and paying, you know, a lot of money. And so this is a great program to say, okay, you know, let's just buy a stage so we don't have to rent it every year, and that kind of sustains the special event. Without us having to pay for rental fees every year.
One other thing, where you're going at, I think, is the idea of using this as a seed. For something that grows and it becomes more so sustaining as opposed to a constant trough that you're coming back to. And and maybe that's something that gets added to the objectives, the idea that all those four of those all, they're all good things, but we also are looking for. Seed startup, initial, you know, get it going kind of, especially within those categories.
Well, but so let let me, let me go back, though, to your, to the dental program.
Sure, I'm not saying that's the only factor, but that would be a factor that we would look at.
Gotcha.
So, as a, you know. The the dental one. That's an interesting one because it's such a determinative service, the value they get out of the little money. I mean, it's it's such a great ROI that it. To me, that's going to stand on its own no matter what. But if the chamber's asking for money to do something, well, for, in that case, I'm looking for the seed. Is this a start of something? Be able to turn into a self-funding.
Yep, great example, yeah.
What we might also bring, Jeff, is, um, first of all. Um, I would like to kind of see a uh anybody interested in serving on the subcommittee. I'd like to have two, at least two councillors on the subcommittee. Finish myself, and then um. What we can also bring back is just kind of some some possible scoring criteria. Um, and and to your point, Don and Lori, having things like, you know, the match that you get from that one. Thing because it's, you know, dentists and all these specialists, you know, compared to what little money we put in, they'd score very high on the match. Whereas, you know, on the repeated thing, is this, you know, is this kind of same song, third verse type, you know, they might score. On it, you know, being a C thing. You know, less or something like that, but they would knock it down hard on the match, so. Um, it might be helpful to kind of have these scoring cri, a little kind of a first run of the scoring criteria, and again, that's where, you know, I struggle with. Kind of, I understand what you guys want as far as special events and things like the uh Timber Festival and and all those, or the SCIF. Thing and, you know, Mount Festival and Winter Fest and Music Fair and Feast and all these events. Um, it's just. Trying to figure out how to, you know, wha- what's your thoughts on that when, you know, when we have so many projects, so. Um, I'd like to hear from you. Can I have a show of hands of anybody who's interested in um being on the committee? Monday, anybody else?
I would add too, Mayor and Council, that section three, the impact on Sandy residents. You know. While. Many of these programs are um. They're they're all good intentioned, right, and and provide a good benefit. I think one of the missing pieces. So that you can continue to make informed decisions is like how many of those participants weren't either Sandy residents or Sandy area community members. Uh, the dental clinic's a great example. Ninety percent of those participants are coming from Gresham to get that service. I'm not saying they are, just making up an example. I think that's important for you to know that. Who the demographic of of those benefiting. Um, and you know, you can then choose if you want to continue to fund that or look for a different funding source for that service that isn't writing a direct Sandy benefit. So I think just trying to. You know, just be more targeted with where these dollars go. There's a limited pot of money for these grant programs. I want to make sure that they're going to. The programs and the opportunities that you really are invested in.
That's a, that's one of the elements of the reporting requirements as well, so we can track back to these step boxes back.
And there was also the um, you know, the uh. When when we had the mountain festival and all, didn't you guys do some data collection yourselves on that geo fencing on?
Yeah, uh, the numbers were supposed to become available today. I have not followed up with John to get those numbers, but I will provide that to the council so you can just get a taste for how many people are actually. In mining park and and the surrounding area during my best, but. And I think having the opportunity to to get that data is really mind blowing to see how many people are. Passing through and where the general location of their origin is. Think you'll recall when Rochelle was still here, part of the winter fest numbers was. You know, people from Montana, people from California, people from Arizona, clearly here visiting family, but it's it's exciting to see like the reach is is wide, right? There's a, a big population of people coming from all over.
Yeah, well, it is important if we're gonna, you know, that they know upfront that they're gonna have to track. Where their customer, where where where. I didn't look over here to any of the, are they interested in being on committee?
Some boards that would be asking for that money, so it'd be comfortable to interest.
Sure, okay, thank you.
So was Mayor, was that just you and Councilor Hanley? I was looking down. Okay, excellent, okay, good.
And we'll take a stab at developing some scoring criteria before the next meeting too.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Our one more question. Um, was there, there was, was there something on here? I can't find it about. Um. You're not eligible if it's a like one-time projects are not eligible. Is there something like that? No? Okay, good. No, it's like if it's a repeat thing, then, you know, you need to kind of explain why, you know.
How it becomes sustainable, that's what we're going, going to have them beef up.
Got it.
And frankly, an example of that has been like the continued past um. Funding of interns at the Historical Society, right? It, there was a lot of comments around this funding last biennium around. Not wanting to fund an ongoing continual expense, and let's figure out a different way to partner. So we want to fund you, well, how do we partner and and fund something else that is going to benefit both of us? Not just ongoing staffing or something like that, so.
Let's get Jeff an intern or something.
All right, um, so we'll wait to uh adopt the guidelines. Um, and if you guys think about it, you know, look through those guidelines. If there's any other changes or edits you want, please bring them to the next meeting. Thank you. Okay, last thing on the agenda is the city manager report.
I'm gonna be very brief. Um, we, gosh. Eight, twelve weeks ago, had put in a funding request for six point eight million dollars with uh Congresswoman Dexter's. Um, office through the community project funding um. Federal earmark, thank you, oh my gosh. Uh, while we did not get, you know, listed in the final list of projects with the full ask, we did get word. Um, that we are on their list and we are included in the fiscal year twenty six House bill for just under one point one million. So, it's not, not everything we asked for, but it's another, you know, step in the right direction for funding that is not coming from our ratepayers. Uh, to help work on the significant infrastructure projects that we have, so just happy to report that. The legwork that we are doing and the legwork that Nellie's doing with us and the facilitating of, you know, letters of intent and letters of requests and all that. It, that the work that we're doing is benefiting, i- it's providing some sort of um tangible outcome, so happy to report that. Otherwise, I talked you enough this evening.
Hey, Don, go ahead.
Was there any other Nellie report that you want? I'll give up my time for you.
I told Nellie I wouldn't put her on the spot, but I didn't tell you that Councillor Hokinson.
No, I don't really have a big update, other than the legislative session is finally over, and so, I, you know, we'll have to. I would highly recommend, you know, coming back in February and putting in another fiscal ask, so. That's something that we'll have to be working on moving forward.
Is that for next year?
Yeah, for twenty.
Do you expect they'll have much uh funds available for the mid-year?
I mean, they are, they are, it it, they'll have something, but not a lot, you know, it's not going to be a ton of money, but. We'll see, and we'll see what happens if they do pull in a special such session for the transportation package, but.
And is there any ever kind, you know, should we be doing some sort of like an after action review? Uh, with some of the folks and ask them what can we do differently, better, you know, whatever in the next time around?
Yeah, well, I circled back with uh both uh Christine Drazen and Senator Bond to say, you know, thank you for your help. This session and, you know, appreciate it, and I mean, realistically, it's just, it, I I don't, you know. We really did everything that we could do. It was a really tough session, and, you know, with two billion dollars in ass and only five hundred millions to go. Around. I mean, we got, we got kind of, you know, a proportion of what we had asked for, so. Okay, given, given the session, I think we did, okay, so.
Thanks for all you do. That's it for me.
Um, I had two, um, two of my committee assignments converged in one giant weekend, Chamber of Commerce and. Mountain Festival, and it was a whirlwind of sweat and um amazingness, but you really have to hand it to these folks who. I mean, literal blood, sweat and tears going into these, going into these events, and they were amazing and successful, and the number of volunteers and. And actually, Mountain Festival has very few volunteers, and they just put in hours and hours and hours of. Of time, and it was, it was really fun to be able to stand next to them and volunteer in my, you know. On my few hours that I was there volunteering, but incredible work that these guys do, and we're super lucky in this community to have these huge events. And those people that are willing to put them on, oh. Well done, folks.
Well, I don't have much because uh my report from Planning Commission last month, we already dealt with today. So those were my big updates. Um, I do have Planning Commission on Monday, we will. Uh, looks like we'll be discussing some suggested variances. Uh, to Deer Park, to Deer Point Park. Um, I'm not sure what those are yet, but um, I'll report back. Uh, the week after that meeting. Um, other than that, I missed the Mountain Festival. I was out of town. I got married the wrong week to live in Sandy. Um, so, I don't know, either the Mountain Festival is gonna have to change, or I'm gonna have to delay my anniversary trip next year. Um, because I did miss the parade. I kind of missed the, that's what makes Sandy great, kind of the small town, sitting next to your neighbor, hopefully. In the chair you left there. Or the tape, the tape works. I love the tape. Um, anyway, it's a great time to celebrate all of us here. And uh, the community we are.
Uh, committee reports, I don't have anything to report, but I do uh have a question, uh, as school's getting ready to start here in the very near future. And with the re-inspiration of the water treatment plant. Have we, have we discussed with? Is it possible to put a truck route so that we divert that traffic down to Kelso? Um, and and off a bluff, or at least limit the times to school? We also just had a conversation about pavement management index. Do we get any reimbursement for the? The extra weight that's going down our roads or anything like that?
So I'm gonna answer your questions in reverse order. We've got no reimbursement for the extra weight or wear and tear on the roads. Um, I will say that. That doesn't mean that door is closed, but there's been nothing to date, other conversation we can have. Um, told I was gonna answer in reverse order, but I don't remember the order now.
One is, can we restrict times or restrict the road altogether and make it go down Kelso?
So, the first part of that, we did have some conversations around not having the truck traffic between certain hours. I think that was. Fairly well respected, although the mayor might be able to tell me yes or no, since you live in closer proximity to that. Um. What was that? I guess just last summer, um, we had requested that there not be truck travel um during the pickup and drop off hours to mitigate that. Congestion. My understanding was that that was followed, but I can circle back with AJ and his contacts at Portland Water Bureau and make sure that that is reiterated again. Um.
That was the case for Kelso and Cat- Catrel, uh, Oregon Trail, um. But I don't believe they followed that for the C range, but we, I think we can kind of require.
Yeah, we, it wasn't explicitly stated in their um. Work permit or whatever the right terminology is for that, but we had made some phone calls and requested, and were told that they were going to adjust their truck route times. Uh, but well, I'll follow up on that, and then I'll refer to Josh on the.
Can I, can I add one? Can I add one thing? And and it's, I've seen it multiple times now, and then my my wife also saw it. They're they're making that turn there by uh Walgreens or whatever it is. Yeah, and it, cars are are having to back up or nearly getting hit. As a result, because it's just not designed for the equipment that they're taking down there. So for that reason, I'm wondering if a truck route is applicable, because it's a, it's a much easier turn to come off twenty six and go down Kelso. And go straight. It's a much more conducive turn to the equipment that they're using, outside of the wear and tear on our roads.
Most of the dump trucks are are hauling trailers.
Yeah, they're they're they're.
That, they're these long.
The double digit, and they, and they have the extended axles on them as well. It's just not designed for that turn.
And so forgive my ignorance, does the city have an existing truck route ordinance?
So what you're saying is?
Something we should look at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we've had this discussion with other routes, i.e. DeBarco, uh, when Jeremy was our counsel, uh, and and and. That, um, so I I think there is, I think we need to bring that forward and and explore that, but also. Um, I don't know if we can have a conversation with the company, because it's only gonna get worse as school picks up in that general area, and there's such an easier route. If they just continue through town. And turn on Kelso. They would have. Much easier life making their turns.
Well, I'd like to.
It just seems stressful.
We'll talk internally and see what options we have available and and come back to. Council what potential solutions.
Nothing.
Wow, meeting, um. I had two meetings. I had one at the end of June, which was the Mountain Economic Alliance meeting. Where we approved their biennium budget and elected board members. That was it. And then the last one I had was, it's a couple of weeks ago, was, I can't even think of that committee's name, but. Don and Mayor, you're on it.
It's the water one.
Yeah, the water one.
I can't remember its name either.
And we discussed um slides that they're gonna share with us, the city council, soon, we hope, um, and how to make them. More readable and understandable.
Making a couple of those tweaks before it gets sent out, because they were. Easy tweaks to make, just a matter of me getting that made and sending it, but that will happen sometime this week.
And then, other than that, I'd say I I enjoy the festival every year. I was traversing through it this year as well. Thank you.
Okay. Um, yeah, I would echo what uh Rich said, if we do have, can kind of come up with the Nordans, I mean, it is challenging. Um, for all those, you know, bluff road neighbors, because bluff. Like, DeBarco is a, our tier. Like DeBarco is a arterial and yet the way those get treated are too far different. You know, on DeBarco, we have speed bumps and traffic calming and all this, and on bluff road, we just have, you know, nothing at all, so. Um, anything we can do to kind of, uh, mitigate that, because it is a lot of residences that move along there. There's a lot of, uh, uh, neighborhoods off of there and kids, uh, going down there. So, yeah, anything we can do. I would say that the, um, mountain festival was one of the, the best ones that I've had. The parade was excellent. I'm so thankful for Lindy's participation. This is the feedback that I got. Um, again, in the mountain festival, um, uh, board was how helpful it was to have. You know, somebody from the city on there, you know, going to their meetings and all, but Lindy specifically for how helpful she was at problem solving for them. Um, because sometimes they didn't know who to go to in the city, so that was really helpful and I really appreciate it. Thank you for your participation on that.
If I can, Mayor, just echo a comment. It was wonderful to have. The city representative who was serving on that committee also communicating with me so that we could problem solve in advance. That has not been something that I've experienced in the past, so I appreciate you, um. Working through that process with me and, and bringing your concerns that you were hearing from them so that we could figure it out by staff.
Thank you, yeah.
Well done, Counselor.
Nice scene, it's warming. Um, I'm looking forward to the, uh, movies, um, and the last concert, uh, coming up in the park. I did miss trying to go, I had all intention of going and then it was so hot.
Do you, do you know what I saw online about that? I was Googling it to see what movies were playing and I accidentally ended up on Sandy Utah's. They're playing the same movies the same weeks we're playing.
No. I'm actually from Sandy.
I was like, who copied you? But anyway.
Okay, um, thank you for Nellie's, uh, all your help on getting us the funding. That was very helpful and I'm excited to have. You know, another one point, one million dollars to plug into the, uh, uh, fee utility rate. System to see what we can, what that can do to both our rates and our, um, SDC, so. I really was impressed with the write-up today from, uh, for Officer Ferguson that just really, you know. The, the fact that it was him that was there at Carver Store, I don't even, he must live a ways away, away from Sandy. That's on his way to work, but, um, just the fact that he was there to save that young man's life. Because like I said, once, you know, stopping to get ice and go out on the river, that would have been a tragedy for such a young man, so. Um, really has, you know, is huge. And I've heard a lot of really good compliments for all of our Sandy PD folks, um, for the mountain festival. And, uh, and it was just, you know, it was fun to see him around and a lot of folks appreciated them, so. Um, that's all I have. I apologize for my meeting. Let's get out.